I do apologize, it has the wrong date as the name of this meeting, but I will fix that as soon as it gets started.
Thank you, Alyssa. So are we, are we good to go?
Yeah, Jen, as long as you feel like it's streaming, okay, I think we're ready to go. Okay, we'll turn it over to Mr. Marco, go for it.
Thank you, excellent, good evening, everyone, at the time being 6:01, I call to order the City of Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. It is October the 27th, 2020, and this is our regular meeting for the month of October. We are again on Zoom tonight and on YouTube. Um, let's see, our webinar ID is 830-7702-9662. And a good phone number to call in on is 1346-248-7799. And with that, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Shaver.
Here.
Commissioner Cipperly.
Here.
Commissioner Grosskopf.
Present.
Commissioner Dane.
Here.
Commissioner Schacter.
Here.
Commissioner Kinkel. Commissioner West.
Here.
And Commissioner Wissing.
Uh, let me see if Amber is on the attendee side, she, I don't see her yet, maybe she'll show up in a little bit. Anyway, a couple of items I wanna um, talk about in the beginning. Commissioner Kinkel has resigned, I think about two weeks ago, so we wish him well, he's gonna take over. Oh, I already forgot which club, Rotary or Kiwanis, I don't remember, I don't wanna say the wrong thing, so he's gonna spearhead that, and then this afternoon, our Commissioner Wussel has been promoted or appointed to Bigger and Better, and she is now officially a city council of Glenwood Springs, so congratulation, Ingrid, and I will miss you, and she also told me to tell all of you that she'll miss our wonderful evenings once or twice a month, but I'm sure we'll see her around, so good luck doing great, she'll do great, uh, thank you. With that said, we'll receive the minutes of the September 22 meeting. Entertaining motion.
Don't move, Marco.
Thank you. Who's second, I'm sorry. George, thank you, George, any discussion on the minutes? Can you do? No discussion, then I will uh, call for the question, to receive the minutes from September 22.
Okay, Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dane.
Yes.
Commissioner Grosskopf. Commissioner Cipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
And Commissioner West.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Steve, uh, doing the same thing again with the September 29th minutes, entertaining a motion to receive those.
Move to accept.
Thank you. And a second, motion a second to receive, uh, any discussion on those minutes?
Marco, I'm gonna recuse, I didn't attend.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Grosskopf is recusing, and I see no other hands or anything, so I'll ask for the question.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Dane.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner Cipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Uh, thank you, Steve, and moving on into uh, item number four.
Marco.
Yes?
I know it may be a bit out of order, but did you see Commissioner West, I'm sorry if I missed it.
No, you didn't miss it, I didn't do it. See how that goes, so entertaining a motion to uh, seat alternate Commissioner West, please.
Don't move.
In a second, and call for the question.
Okay, Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Cipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Dane.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner Grosskopf.
Yes.
And do I call Commissioner West?
Uh, I don't think so.
He votes for himself, right?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Excellent, thank you, thank you, Jen, for reminding me, I was all uh, I was all nervous with Ingrid's gone and all that, so I totally missed it, so anyway, uh, hey Ben, good evening, Commissioner West is now officially seated. Uh, he's our alternate, so thank you. Uh, moving on to item number four tonight, comments from citizens appearing for items that are not on the agenda tonight. Uh, if you're in the attendees section of this meeting, please raise your hand. And I see no hands, so thank you very much, we'll move on to our uh, new items for tonight, and we'll jump right into item A, which is uh, planning item 27 dash 20, which is a consideration of a minor, sorry, major uh, site architectural plan review for the expansion of the Iron Mountain Hot Springs. And is it Gretchen or Trent, I don't remember.
It's mine, uh, Marco, yeah, um, before we get started, um, Steve, I'm wondering if you could promote a couple people out of the attendees to the panelists.
Yep.
And that would be, uh, let's see, I see Doug Pratt in attendance, Steve Beckley in attendance. I don't see Julie Pratt. Um, or, oh, Doug Flenty, who might be the other Doug on the line.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, I've got Mike Foster, but I didn't see, oh, he's there, yep, Mike Foster. Uh, Derek, sorry, I've got way too many screens open here. Um, and Chris from Mountain Cross Engineering, which I don't think I saw him. And I apologize if I've missed anybody, we can certainly promote folks, um, once we get to the their part of the presentation. So if you bear with me, I need to close the screen and open, oops, um, I'm going to gosh, such a slow computer, start sharing my screen here and give a brief presentation, I hope.
Thanks Gretchen, and if there's anybody out there that needs to be promoted that we've missed, just raise your hand and I'll try to watch for you.
All right, hold on, I had it on my desktop and now it's not allowing me to share. All right, I'll have to go into my files, so sorry. So you all can talk amongst yourselves for a moment. It's thinking about opening the file, there we go. All right. I don't understand what's going on, it's not coming up at, at all.
Are you able to email it to me, I can um, share my screen.
Yeah. Here, I'm just gonna put myself on mute here. I'll email this to you, Jen, so sorry. Okay, Jen, just sent you the email, and there were two attachments, and it could be either one of them, it doesn't matter. You, Jen, it occurred to me, I've had this problem once before, and there was something that you were able to do to switch something on your end that allowed me to share my screen.
I, I would think that, and maybe Alyssa is still on to help, but, and I think anybody who is a panelist should be able to share their screen. But I have your, I have your PowerPoint here now.
Okay.
It, it has like yellow and blue.
Yep, or that's it, yep.
Hold on just a second here, let me hit share screen. Are you able to see that?
Yep, I can.
Okay, great.
So Jen, if you could um, skip to the next, the next line. So sorry, everybody, um, joys of technology. So, the Iron Mountain Hot Springs uh, was originally approved, approved in 2014, and it consists of an entrance building with locker rooms and offices, it's the bathhouse, uh, it, there's a number of mineral pools on the site, a concession building, mechanical building, and officially a 90 space parking lot. Next screen, Jen. The uh, Iron Mountain proposes an expansion south of the existing resort, which includes a 12,000 square foot, two-story new entrance building with offices, locker rooms, a restaurant, and retail. There, they propose an enclosed pool building, 10 new mineral pools, four private cabanas each with um, each with their own private pool. Three new pools on the grounds of the existing resort and improved and expanded parking area. Then they also plan a, uh, to continue a riverbank restoration project immediately adjacent to the development site. Next slide, Jen. So this site plan shows the proposed development, and I apologize, I can't point to anything, but the existing facilities off to the left of the screen. The parking area, the existing parking area you see is there cross-hatched in the site plan. The uh, proposed new entrance building is immediately adjacent to the existing hot springs. The enclosed building is to the right of that, you'll see the mineral pools, there's 10 of them, like settle right up there along the river. Um, I wanted to point out the city's um new, well, it'd be a relocated lift station, which is not part of this development proposal, but it is being considered administratively at this point. And then on this plan, off to the far right side of the screen, you see a, a future site, um, or a site for a future hotel. That is also not part of this application. So ne- next slide. This expansion amends an existing major development, so this application requires both the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council Review. The, so on this application, the commission will be a recommending body to City Council. The, in reviewing a site architectural application such as this, the Planning and Zoning Commission considers how the project conforms to four criteria. And that is consistency with the general purpose and intent of the code. Consistency with the dimensional design development and all other standards of the code. Um, consistency with previously approved land use applications and consistency with the comprehensive plan and other adopted city policies and plans. Next slide, there you go. So with regard to the first two criteria that address code compliance. Um, the first thing I've checked off is the sensitive area protection standards, and specifically, I wanted just to briefly mention that those 10 new pools are within the high water setback, but as you all know, um, recently, as of September, um, section 070040020, paragraph D24, which is specifically the riparian zone regulations, were amended. And among other things, those amendments exempted hot springs development um, as long as the pools do not result in streambank erosion, water quality, and riparian uh, area degradation, and like I, I just mentioned, this project does include a riparian um, restoration or shoreline restoration plan, uh, adjacent to the expansion area. Those plans call for planting 50 native shrubs and 60 perennials and grasses. Then also, I've checked off the common and common open space and landscaping. The project, I found that the project does comply with those code requirements is, as well as the requirements for landscaping in the parking lot. With regard to access and circulation, pedestrian and roadway improvements along Deveraux and at the intersection of Deveraux with Highway 6, if you all recall. Were required with the caverns village development, which is currently under construction adjacent to uh, this property. So no additional pedestrian and road, roadway improvements are contemplated with this particular application, however, I did wanna mention that additional improvements may be required with the future hotel development, and those will be evaluated at the time that application is submitted. So next slide, Jen, please. With regard to off-street parking, my staff report, actually, I had roughly calculated that 74 spaces were required. But that's actually not accurate, um, I need to amend what I wrote because under the prior code, parking for outdoor uses was calculated differently than how it's calculated today. Actually, that existing, the existing development was required to provide 90 off-street parking spaces, and it did just that. The new expanded development is required to provide 56 spaces for, so for a total of 146 spaces of required parking. This application um, provides uh, 233 spaces with the uh, expanded and reorganized parking area. And just a reminder to, this parking area is shared with the tram, and it will eventually also be shared with the future hotel. Again, the sufficiency of parking on this property and the shared use of the parking spaces with the hotel as well as the tram will all be addressed again when the hotel application is reviewed. So finally, with regard to the building design, um, I found that the entrance building, the two-story structure is compliant with the city's commercial design standards. The enclosed pool building, however, does not meet the letter of the code in that the building's roofline, the east and west rooflines and the east elevation exceed the maximum length without providing required architectural elements. However, Jen, you could switch the slides to the next one, there we go. The new code allows the commission to consider what's called an alternative equivalence compliance. And in this case, the owner proposes um, adding an earthen roof to the uh, enclosed pool building, so on that roof, there will be about six, or sorry, 12 to 18 inches of soil. And it will be planted with um, native uh, grasses, there will also be an irrigation system installed on the roof to make sure that this is uh, the plants remain healthy. Next slide. Uh, when considering alternative designs, um, under this proceed, alternative compliance procedure. The applicant is required to show that the proposed design complies with these four criteria that are on your screen. With regard to the first two, which is the achieves the intent of the code and advances the goals and policies of the code. The earthen roof actually does enhance the visual physical qualities of the site. Um, and uh, physical qualities of the city, it, it visually connects the building's interior with the exterior. Uh, it, well, it helps to do that, and it's also compatible with the surrounding natural environment, and these these are three of several um, of the goals and intent of the design standards. With regard to number three, uh, results in the benefits to the community that are equivalent to or exceeds um, the subject standard. This, this is actually the first known earthen roof building that I'm aware of in the city. Um, it, so it is quite unique, it reduces, it, it, the earthen roof helps to reduce the visual mass of the roof itself. It does provide a softer appearance than a flat metal roof wood. And, and it does not obviously glare as a regular metal uh, roof wood. And then finally, it blends with the surrounding native landscaping. Number four, it imposes no greater impacts on the adjacent properties than would uh, occur through the compliance with the specific uh, criteria of the code or specific code requirement. This east building wall um, on uh, is actually five to seven and a half feet tall along that sidewalk that parallels the parking lot. It's um, the wall is a- actually also constructed in stone, so in my opinion, it would appear much like a retaining wall would. In short, staff does support this unique design alternative. Uh, next slide, Jen. Then uh, we also consider comprehensive plan and how this project meets several of the goals in the, the comprehensive plan. I'm not going to read all the goals that are on the screen, but I do wanna note that the, the reason why preserve natural resources is uh, at the bottom is that a component of this project, as I mentioned before, um, does um, preserve the natural resources, the shoreline restoration project and by preserving and enhancing the river cor- corridor environment. So as usual, um, I distributed this application to the city departments uh, for their review and comments. We received comments from the engineering and public works departments, which were attached for your review in my report, I included the planning department, uh, or I said that the planning department included comments too, but we actually didn't. Um, so Jen, could you go the next slide? So this project, in summary, requires that the Planning and Zoning Commission consider two separate action items, and that is the consideration of the major site architectural plan review for the expansion of the hot springs. And then the second action item is consideration of the alternative equivalence compliance request for the um the building design uh, for the, the enclosed pool that doesn't necessarily meet the letter of the code. Next slide. As is our uh, procedure during these times uh, that we're meeting remotely. The commission will hear the presentations and take initial public comments on the site architectural application. But to give people the most opportunity to comment, the commission will not take a vote on this item tonight, instead both of the two action items on the previous slide will be continued to a special meeting that will be held on Monday November night at 6:00 PM. Um, the last slide, Jen. Thank you, this is how uh, the folks in our audience can comment on this application, if they don't wanna provide their um, verbal comments tonight. They can send us the comments um, by writing via US mail and address your letter to City Hall 101 West 8th Street in Glenwood Springs, 81601. Or you can drop the um, your comments off in one of the city's uh, utility drop boxes. Or you can email them directly to me, and my email is Gretchen dot Rice Hill, and that's R-I-C-E-H-I-L-L at C-O-G-S dot U-S. And preferably, I'd like to get those comments no later than November 8th, which, but, you know, I mean, we are taking comments clear up to pretty much the start of the meeting, so, but preferably November 8th. And that's all I have, and I can answer any questions that you might have. Thank you, Jen, appreciate your help.
Excellent, thank you, Gretchen, thank you, Jen. And back to the commission for questions to staff, please raise your hand and we'll go uh, down the list, order received. And we'll start with Commissioner Grosskopf, please.
Sorry about that, thank you, thank you, Gretchen, um, just a couple questions about what I read in the staff report. Um, you have some comments about the current parking plan showing 233, and then it talks about it being above the maximum parking. Um, but yet, I think you're comfortable with that, is that accurate?
Um, so that was the um when I made my error in the calculations, this now complies with that 125% above, so it's not a concern to me. Like I said before, I really, once, once the hotel comes in, we're really gonna take a, a good look at, at all the uses that, that utilize this parking area, just to make sure that it is sufficient for the use, but it, it's not above the, the maximum.
Um, and is there a likelihood, just projecting forward, that I guess what I'm getting at, that by delaying the demand study until you understand the hotel. I, I mean, I don't wanna set us up where we're at a place where then there's not sufficient parking, but yet, the space has been used and determined. So how are, I mean, I guess I'm just confused a little bit about always the, the stepping of the different stages, so.
That's a, that's a good question, but really, until that, the hotel application comes in, I mean um, the plan is to have perhaps a 100-room hotel, but that might not be the case, and so I it, it's really difficult to project what the parking requirement or need might be. So um, I, I, you know, I hate to kick the can down the road, as always, but until we've got the, the complete, all the complete uses on this site, it's, it's really difficult to to understand the whole parking situation. But for right now, with this development, it more than meets the code requirement. But for right now, with this development, it more than meets the code requirement.
Yeah, I just wonder if we're going to end up in a position later where there is either a variance or, you know, kind of a request based on insufficient parking for demand. So I guess we don't know. Thing I had a question about in here was the construction of the 10 new pools. And then there was some description about them potentially being exclusive, but then staff didn't feel that way.
Well, that was part of the, the traffic analysis that I think the original intent was that the, the 10 mineral pools would be exclusive to hotel users. And I would like the Steve Beckley or Doug to dive into this question a little bit more or maybe provide some illumination. Because the way that, that the hotel, the future hotel is proposed to be situated with the lift station between it and the mineral pools, I just didn't see the exclusivity. I didn't see it being an exclusive use to the hotel, but perhaps Steve can, Steve or Doug can provide some more information.
Okay, yeah, we'll hear from them. And then I just confirming that you're, no engineering standards, the Deveraux Road requires a sidewalk on one side which exists, but then.
It will exist. Yeah. Sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt.
That's right. Cause you would take the bridge, I guess. No, maybe I'm misunderstanding that. Where would this future sidewalk? That's a to be constructed go.
On the Two Rivers side of Deveraux. So there would be a crosswalk across Deveraux and the sidewalk would go along Two Rivers Park and across the existing pedestrian bridge to connect with the existing sidewalk.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay. And then maybe a question for you, but maybe later for applicant, but with the, the green roof, which is a cool idea, I just want to know what the thought process is at wintertime. You know, how does it look and said grasses, but just kind of a sense of, you know, there will be less green in the winter. And so what kind of coloring would it look like in some description? And Gretchen, if you have anything you could talk or that's a future question.
I think I would like Doug Pratt to probably answer that one.
And that's all I had. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Grosskopf, and on to Commissioner Schacter, please.
Thank you, Gretchen. Even though our, our code, the new code exempted hot springs from some of the riparian requirements and setback, was the river commission consulted or offered to provide comments on this proposal?
No, but I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, please, Doug or Steve, the, the river commission did have, did review the improvements along the, the property, the riparian improvements.
Well, they'll confirm that, but it'd be nice, I think, to consider maybe getting something on record before the next meeting, just a thought since we do have the commission. The other question was related to Commissioner Grosskopf's. I noticed the parking and there was something about ADA and also section 404, which I don't understand. Those were mentioned in staff reports. Have those been addressed?
The ADA, that was a comment from engineering and we just need to ensure that, that they have sufficient handicap parking for the use. I am not concerned about that part of it because they have more than enough parking on site right now. So if they need to add additional accessible parking, they can certainly do it. The 404 permit was that actually they, they do have, that's a core of engineers. Yeah, sorry.
That's the one within the packet? Was that the permit? Okay, thank you. And I know you mentioned the hotel is still subject to what kind of capacity, but did anybody, did you happen to do as an exercise, if it were 100 rooms, what the parking requirement would be or are you leaving that for the future?
I am leaving that for the future.
Okay. All right. And the last question, if you may, and maybe if you want to handle it, if not, we'll do it with the applicant. What the old entrance building, I, what, what is its future use?
That's a really good question that I am going to punt to Doug and Steve.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Commissioner.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Schacter. Any other questions to staff at this point? No, we'll see none. Thank you. Would the applicant care to come forward and present your item? Please state your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Doug Pratt with the Land Studio. Julie and I are here. We're working with Iron Mount Hot Springs to put this expansion application together. Steve Beckley is here. I don't, is, is Dan Coakley also out there anywhere? Can you see Steve on the attendees?
He is not.
Okay, anyway. So Doug Flinche is also part of the team here as well. So I have a, we have kind of a brief presentation. Steve, do you want to make any more comments before I share my screen and we started?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So see how this goes. All right. So can you see this, everybody? Yes? So Steve and I, we're not in the same place, but we're going to try and tag team a little bit. So bear with us as we move through. I think Gretchen did a great job of this, with her presentation, kind of regarding code conformance. We might move through this a little bit graphically and maybe talk through some of the points that, that you all have questions about as well. Steve, do you want to start talking through this? You want me to start and you can jump in?
I'll go ahead and start and then, you know, we'll have Doug or I have Mike Foster talk about the architecture and, and jump in any time. So the, the hot springs is, as we see it now, this has to be kind of pre-COVID. Now during COVID, we've, we've completely restricted the number of people that come into the property. And by, we probably reduced it by about 60%. So, and we take reservations for certain time slots. The new expansion is, if you kind of picture the, the furthest north part of this more of a family area. And then the middle part is more of a supervised kids area where kids can join adults with supervision. And then the new 10 pools will be adult only. Everybody will enter through the new entry building. And if you, if you were going to use the more adult exclusive pools, you would go into the locker rooms in the new building. If you're going to use the, the family side, you'd still continue to use the locker rooms in the, in the old facility. So we're still going to completely use the old facility for locker rooms and for retail storage. And all of our offices will still be there. The new building is, is basically has a, 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 a kiffay in the, in the building that will be used for only people that are patrons of the facility, not no outside patrons, just you have to be have paid to get into the property to utilize it. And there will also be a large mechanical room in there that will support the, the 10 new mineral pools. And then the, as you go further south, the new enclosed pool is about a 2,000 square foot surface area pool that will be enclosed. And that again will also be adult only. As we visualize this, as you, as the, the hotel comes into play, eventually you'll just be able to go right from your hotel and walk into the, into the, the new areas. So it will be really tied more to the hotel, but we have to, we felt we have to phase this development because of the, you know, just because the expense in the, of the, of the whole project. So you want to go to the next slide or do you want to add anything here, Doug?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add the, the link here. So this is the new entry building. So this is location on the screen. If you, can you see my cursor as I'm moving around here? So this is new entry building here. So those two are linked. This is the new enclosed pool structure and that is right here. So those two are the same building. We have three additional pools that are going to be part of the existing facility. Those pools are kind of outlined with an oval there. Then we have the 10 pools here and then the cabanas that Gretchen discussed too are down just south of this pool building. So then, then this lower piece is the, is the lift station that she was also referring to. So just for context, these next ones kind of show a little bit more, just a little bit blow up of those. Do you want to talk through that, Steve, or you just want me to run through those?
Probably go to the next slide and then we'll talk about the next one. So, so let's talk a little bit about the parking. One thing that Gretchen, there was a little bit of an error on this parking is not going to be shared with tramway. This parking, the, the new seat up facility, which is next to it will be a, a shared parking lot with a tramway. Tramway patrons will, will not use the Iron Mount Hot Springs parking. And I think another question there was the, the traffic study. We did a full traffic study on, on this project, which included 100-room hotel and 10 new pools. But what we've done, what we've talked to engineering about with Terry is that we will do a, a new traffic study that will kind of get the new data as we have this. What we, what we're, what we're providing here will, will, will be less than impactful than our, a, a initial traffic study that had 100-room hotel in it. We will provide a new traffic study when we get, as we bring the hotel on in the next phase. And that will, you know, give us more data to look at exactly the parking impacts and the traffic impacts. Go ahead.
So this next slide. Sorry, it's taking a second here. I'm just going to scroll this way. So the next slide, Gretchen showed you a slide that talked about kind of existing parking as it was, as it's currently approved. So this just shows maybe a little more global, a, a little further out what that looks like. So the red hatched area is the existing parking that's been approved. The blue hatching is everything that we've added to this, to this parking scenario. Future hotel parking is associated with that access to the hotel is all in this area right here. So again, it's just trying to show you in relationship to the new building here. I'm sorry, I changed north on you. North is now to the left. So I'm sorry about that. So the new building is here. The entrance to the new building is right there. The enclosed pool, covered pool is right here. And then all of the blue hatching is new parking and all of the red hatching is how it's currently configured. So Steve, any more on that?
It, one thing you, if you look at, we, we've actually modified the entrance into the facility that makes it a little bit more pedestrian friendly. And you'll see, and it just fits better with the design as it ties into the new seat up facility plus the, the caverns village apartment complex, the employee housing unit that's up to the upper part of the screen.
And also just for context, the seat up parking that Steve was talking about is just up in this upper right corner of the screen. It kind of goes off the page, but that's, that's access to that seat up parking. With that, Steve, do you want to just talk programmatically a little bit about what happens in the building? And then maybe we can switch over to Mike.
That would be great. So as you, as you would come into the building, there's the check-in. Behind the check-in, we'll have laundry and offices. If you decide you're going to the family area, you would continue through the double doors and go over to the, to the existing locker room. If you would, if you wanted to use the new facility, you would actually go into the staircase of the elevator and go down to the lower level where the locker rooms are. Both, the whole entire facility would have access to the, to a new retail area plus the, the restaurant seating, which has a deck that overlooks the river and, and garage doors that open up and, and, and makes a nice area for people to sit while they're, while they're waiting for their family or, or they just want to buy, buy to have a quick bite for lunch. And then we have a professionally designed kitchen and additional bathrooms on this level. And then the lower level is two locker rooms. These locker rooms will be very similar to our existing facility, except there will be less lockers. This, this side of the facility is designed to, to handle about half of, of what the other side is designed to handle. And so the lockers will be larger lockers, more luxurious showers and bathroom facilities here and then direct access out to the, to the, to the lower level in the pools. One, one modification that's on this that I don't, I don't see in this design on, on a, on a new, basically the footprint's the same, but on a new interior layout, we actually added a, a family bathroom or two family bathrooms because we have a, a fairly large amount of seniors that come in and need a family bathroom to share, to, to have a, a couple that has a place to help each other change. And so we've added a family, family bathrooms in this facility also. Mike, do you want to add more to this?
No, thanks, Steve. Mike Foster with Triumph Architecture. A, a, as you see, the, the rendering of the main new entrance building, it, it is a two-story facade on the parking lot side. So this is the parking lot side, that the gable entry there would be taking you into that new check-in area that Steve was talking about. And then directly above that check-in area laundry office is a, a small second floor in there. And that's about 17, 1800 square feet. So as you're looking at this elevation, this is the main level locker rooms below. But we do have that second level right here that is going to be office space for the time being. So as far as architecture and materials, we're really trying to follow the existing palette that is there today of the existing bath house. So we've got a stone base with some stone accents and that's a, that's a tell you ride blend that will match the, the stone that is there today. We've got two different kinds of siding or two different patterns of siding. We have a horizontal lap siding and then we've got a, a shingle siding. Windows will be an aluminum clad and I think we've picked the color of that to be a Mesa red. Again, it, it, it's all to match and to be in the same flavor of the building today. Metal roof, the roof pitches are an eight 12. And then we, you can see we've got some cedar accents with some, some trusses and, and some different accents to, to dress up the building. The backside, what you're seeing now, this is the riverside where Steve was talking about the larger garage doors on the right side that would open up from the restaurant and restaurant seating area. That deck extends out about 12 feet there at that location. And then to the left where we have the retail, that deck sticks out or extends out that location as well. Below that, below the garage doors is that large mechanical space that Steve was talking about that will house the equipment or the infrastructure for the new pools, the cabanas and so forth. To the left underneath the retail where you see one single red door, there's actually another door that's missing there. But those will be the entrance and exits into the new men's and women's locker room facilities. The, the bottom elevation is the elevation that will be facing or, or to the north towards the new, the new, or sorry, the existing bath house. So here again, you can see that we've got two levels above ground. And then on the, on the riverside, we've got the main level and one level semi recessed or recessed and into the, into the sloping hillside. The next picture just gives you a couple of quick little bird's eye views of, of how the massing comes together. And basically how we've tried to fit it into the hillside and, and work with the topography of the existing, of the existing site. Next building is, is, you know, Steve and Gretchen, I'm sorry, and Doug talked about an indoor pool facility. So the, the, the new entrance building, if we come off at sidewalk level or at, at the parking lot level, let's call that level 100. This is down about a half a level. So not quite all the way down at the, at the, the locker rooms, but it's at a mid-level. Again, trying to, to use the topography and sink it into the ground, which we think works well with the earth roof that we are proposing for this. So in this, in this floor plan here, at the top of the page, you can see we've got a, a, a run of mechanical space. And that mechanical space is for this new. And that mechanical space is for this new pool. We have a spa to the right and then as said earlier, this is about a two thousand square foot new pool. That on cool rainy snowy days, we can close it up and and keep it nice and heated and enjoy it. But then on on normal days or on average days, these these again are are garage doors. Our large overhead doors that can open up. So this can feel like an indoor outdoor facility that would allow for for different uses. The pool deck obviously is from the walls in, but the pool deck extends out. So once these doors are open, you can really take advantage of the indoor, the the conditioned pool. And then the views of the river further to the west. Next, again, this is a a quick rendering of of what that pool building is going to look like. We've got the glazing to the left there that would open up to the river. This actually elevation would be to the south or to the new cabanas. And then eventually to the to the connecting hotel. The roof has a two twelve roof pitch, again, with about twelve to fourteen inches of soil on top. So that we can get natural grasses and shrubs and and so forth to to grow on top of that. Again, all that will be irrigated so that we can get plants to to survive. This is a little bit of a breakdown to the bottom left. You can see a a quick section of how the structure would work and then the soil and then the planting on top of that. The the top would would tell you how we've got a a plywood deck then built up with insulation. Waterproofing is going to be critical on this and and showing how the waterproofing, the drainage board and all that would work. And then eventually how Doug will plant the the very top of it. To the right is an irrigation. We were talking about, you know, how are we going to irrigate this and and verify or assure that we're going to get proper growth? So that this is just a little bit of the detail of the earth earth work roof that we are proposing.
Jump in, Mike, just on the plant materials that Catherine asked about. You know, so yes, the the plant materials will be dormant in the winter. But the plan is to to use a variety of textures and and patterns with grasses and and perennials. So that there's some interest on those roofs in the wintertime. So you know, some grasses have really feathery plumes, some are more stiff and upright. You know, I think it's going to be looking at a a series of bunch grasses and perennials that kind of keep an interesting texture over the winter. It's not going to be green, so I mean, it's going to be snow covered when it snows and, you know, but it's also meant to look a little closer to. The natural landscape than it would be looking at, you know, a metal or a shingle roof on a on a structure. So again, the reason there aren't dormers or eaves or pitches or hips that break up this roof. Is because we're trying to keep it simple for for planting on the roof itself. So sorry, sorry, Mike, I just wanted.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Doug, for jumping in there. Now, this picture is just to to represent what what that the roof itself could look like. This, of course, is an elevated structure. On on this, the side facing us where you see the these tube steel columns. That is the the side that Gretchen was talking about where we would have about a five to six foot tall stone wall. So that'll be the backside of that mechanical and the backside of this pool building as it opens from east to west. So as you're driving up on in a car on the parking lot, you're going to see about a five to six foot tall. And the reason I'm saying five to six feet is because the stone wall will be a consistent height, but the sidewalk has a slope to it. So on the on the uphill side, we're about five feet and then it slopes down to a little over six feet with the grade of the of the sidewalk. That's where you would see the the stone wall or the backside of this this pool element. I I think that is that is it. Again, here's a a site plan. One of the questions earlier was, you know, what will happen to the existing bath house? And and the plan right now is for this new facility, that's where all guests will come into. So whether you're going to use the the family side or the adult only side, you will check into the new facility. Then you'll go either over to the north to the existing locker rooms for the family. Or downstairs to the new locker rooms for the adult only. And then on the on the family side, that they'll still be the the little retail in there. And that will be more of exiting out of the facility. The 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 new side or the adult side, I envision them exiting out of this new entrance building. But what we tried to do was increase the size, the efficiency of the check in and that whole lobby area. Because if we we get quite a bottleneck there of people coming in and trying to get all checked in at once. Where this new facility, we have a little bit more space, a little bit more countertop to be able to manage people in a more efficient manner as they check into the facility. So I believe that is it.
Yeah, that's and then I've just shown just a a couple of different illustrations of the. This is kind of a blow up with the landscape plan. Like we said, trees, shrubs, grasses, perennials, seeded areas. All incorporated in identifying the the list of plant materials that we have going on in the project. And with that, we we do have kind of this riparian landscape that we're we're proposing to upgrade the the embankments right now. These are a couple of pictures looking two different directions of the embankment along the river for this this new area right here. So there was a question regarding the River Commission. I I think the River Commission got this as a referral, although we'll definitely reach out to the River Commission. And kind of go through this plant list with them, make sure they're on board and we can do that between our two our two hearings here between now and November ninth.
Doug, let me expand on this a little bit. When we first started this project, we we pulled a four oh four permit, which is an Army Corps of Engineer permit. That allowed us to go from the high water mark down to the river. And our our intent was to actually build. Basically beach areas where people could walk down to the river and utilize the river. As we've been at this site for five years now, we've realized that that the Colorado River has such a fluctuation in in water levels. And and sometimes is is relatively unsafe for people to be close to, especially small children. That our goal has changed in that five years and now we are planting. Plants and 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 repairing the riparian area with. That will will prevent people from accessing the river. We want to keep keep people in our facility and plant willows and and vines and stuff and shrubs that keep people from wandering down to the river. So that that's actually been a change in our plan. So s- since we're keeping all of our our modifications out of the high water mark. We probably will not utilize our four oh four permit. And and that was one of the reasons that the River Commission probably had a lot of input was if we started getting down into the. Down into that area that was Army Corps of Engineers, that that would certainly be much more impactful. So we're staying out of that, but we're planting stuff that will actually, as you can see, are we don't really have much of a riparian area now. It's been pretty pretty much impacted by the old facility that was built here a hundred years ago. Plus all the salt water that comes through this gravel. So we will be making this a hundred percent better than it is now, so.
Okay, and with that, I think we are we are finished, I guess, just as kind of representing the applicant. We I know you're not making a decision until next week, but we would we would really like to hear any input you have now. If there are any next steps that we need to take between now and November ninth. You know, I think the River Commission was a great suggestion. You know, we'd like to know how you feel about the project. Gretchen, you can tell me if I'm overstepping my bounds here. But but even though we're continuing to another another meeting, it'd be great to get as much input today as you as your. As your chair is willing to 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 let you provide. So sorry, Chairman, if I'm overstepping, but I just wanted to throw that out there, so thank you.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much. Thanks, guys. Thanks, Steve, Doug and Mike. Back to the commission, questions to the applicant at this point, please raise your hand. To get more information. And we'll start with Commissioner Zippily, please.
Thanks, thanks Gretchen and everyone for that presentation. I do have quite a few things, I think, maybe I'll just go through them and then give you guys a chance to respond to them item by item. I did note about the shape of the ten new pools. I really like how the existing facility works and looks kind of natural along the river. Now, the civil drawings, the master plan and I think it was the architectural drawings show them all differently. The civils got ten identical pools pushed very closely together, all right in a row there at the water's edge. Which kind of varies from how the the previous development was and also how some of the other drawings look. Now, part of the reason I asked this question is access to these pools is via a patio. And there's different areas noted on the various drawings as to where the edge of the pavement is. Yes, we recently did kind of revise our riverbank rules. But one of my concerns here is the amount of paving between the buildings and going right up to the pools at the edge of the river. In part for for flood events and erosion control. So that was one of them, the shape of the pools and the impervious surfaces. Or maybe that's stepping stones or something that water can get through. Next question, oh, I I really do love the green roof and I'm so excited to see one built here in Glenwood, so thanks for taking the chance on that. The paths to the the enclosed pool. So I see that there's an ADA lift in the enclosed pool. But then I see that there's stairs leading there from inside the building. And I'm wondering, how does someone who might need a lift into the pool get to the pool? And thank you for always keeping people with disabilities in mind as we plan these things. And of course spas and pools are really beneficial. But from what I can figure out is you have to come out all the way at the west side of the new building out of three foot. Or so wide door out of the locker room and traverse the entire site and go back up a ramp to enter the enclosed pool all the way at the south side. So if I could get a little clarification on that. Also, the new restaurant upstairs, I'm kind of. I'm not really one to like to exclude the whole portions of our community. However, I understand that a kid free environment could be kind of nice here, but if children are allowed in the restaurant. How do you keep them from going down the stairs out the locker rooms? Just wondering, is there an extra level of security there? And if you are in these adult pools, can are you free to just go back over to the? The jade and amber pools that are nicely spaced out or do you have to come back through the building and get a different wristband? That question is a little bit admittedly for personal interest. And one other thing I wasn't sure about, the drawings referred to the boundaries unlimited. I think civil plans. And it does appear that some of the parking provided is going to back directly into the access road. And I'm think we're just maybe missing the left hand side of some parking drawings and was wondering. If backing cars out of sort of a primary access road might be a concern. That is all I noted down and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Zippily. Would you guys care to reply to those?
I can I can answer some of them. The the ten new pools, the shapes will be a little bit more consistent. Than the ones that we have before. We we're having a little bit harder times maintaining some of those. And especially as it comes to shade structures, we're we're really struggling with putting shade, which is required, you know, really required by our patrons. We've tried umbrellas and they fail. And so we're trying to make something that that we can easily put shade on and into in between the pools. And also each pool is designed to have a a landscape feature like an elevated. Planting that you won't be able to see from one pool to the next, they'll all be separated. So all you'll see is the entrance and you'll see the river. And so there there should be no visual impacts between the two pools when you look at the designs. And that's, we did that on purpose, so we had our most popular pools are all the pools down by the river. So we're trying to give people more access to viewing the river and shade. So that's kind of why why they ended up being more consistent looking. Because we we took our actually best pool that we had and we kind of redid it to make. They'll all, the majority will have gravel bottoms, the majority of will kind of mimic the ones that are the most popular. The the pathways are very similar, almost identical to the pathways we have now. They'll be ten to fifteen foot wide. And they'll access the pools and then the the drainage will go into a a vegetation area where it will. Actually, you'll be a barrier to the river. So if you if you've been to our existing facility, it'll be very similar to that, just exactly how the the flow goes to the river now. The ADA access, as you come down towards the south of the property, that that is it, that actually gains elevation. So we have to gain about five feet, so per code, we only gain about five percent grades. So so we need to have about five hundred foot of pass to get or. Is that right, Mike? About a hundred foot of pathways to get up five feet. So that's why it has to go all the way to one end and then back to get to get the elevation gain and still be in code with no more than five percent grade change. So that was all calculated to 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 meet the ADA requirements. And yes, we have a, we have a very big contingency of people since we put in the ramp into the pool. That come in and borrow our handicap chair, it's plastic, they can get in it and then go into the pool. So it's, it is utilized quite a bit. Access to the new area will all be done with RFID wristbands. So so the restaurant in the upper level will be accessed to everybody. But if you are going to the adult area only, you'll be given a wristband that operates gates that will allow you to the lower level. If you're in the adult area only, you'll have the ability to go through, there's you'll feel between the two properties, there's actually a a pathway. Your your wristband would allow you to go utilize the whole rest of the facility. So if you have going to the new area, you'll have access to all twenty six mineral pools. And both large freshwater pools and and the other side of the facility. It would just keep people from coming the other way, so. And I didn't really understand the parking space one. Doug, maybe you could answer that. I don't know where where we were looking at that the the backing into the main. Main driveway.
Yeah, maybe it'd help if I put the master plan drawing back up. So let me go back up here. So we're, I guess it is a quite, I I also have a question, were you just concerned about parking? Like people backing into the the main aisle here, is that the concern?
Yeah, both there. I I do feel like people will probably be going a little slower once they come and approach the new pool building. But the there's that pair of access roads almost off the corner of the page. Yeah, that come coming in a straight shot right there by that entry monument. Well, might still be kind of, I don't know, maybe maybe they would be going quickly and not notice someone was attempting to back out there. And I don't know if you've made any allowances for, you know, speed bumps or dips or anything like that.
Well, I think part of the reason we reconfigured this from some of the original access, I'm gonna I'm gonna go to back to another slide. As you can see in the red, it was really, I mean, there's a little bit of a curve to it, but it was kind of a straight shot. You know, so we so we have made some attempts to try and force people to make turning movements. Where you actually have to slow down to turn left versus coming straight into the parking area without having to make a turn. So so that has been, and then ultimately when the hotel gets developed, there will be a port of share and turning movements and handicap access over here. So I think in general, there's going to be active turning movements that slow people down. And activity that slows people down at those locations versus having kind of a straight shot like it like it has been in the past. I'm coming into the parking area, if that makes sense.
Does, thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Shaver, please.
Thank you. I have a question about, is this, is the existing shoreline, is that natural? Is that the way it was before white people came to the area?
That that's a good, that's a good question. I I'm a white person and it was that way when I got here, so I think. You know, I I think there's obviously been some disturbance on that shoreline, you know. You know, Steve, you might, you might know the history of that property when you purchased it a little better than I do um to, to address that.
This, this facility was actually a hot springs that was built in eighteen ninety-five. So there was a hot springs facility here for a hundred and twenty years. It was actually, it was actually torn down in nineteen ninety-four. And uh, when we got it, that, that's how the riverbank looked. So I think it's a combination of, of what uh, people have done to the riverbank in, in previous developments a hundred years ago. But it's also because we have, if you go down anywhere in this property, eight, eight feet down, approximately you'll hit a hot water layer that is come moving through the gravel. So we have a, a lot of salt content, so it really is hard. We're gonna, when we plant on this riverbank, we're gonna have to do some, some, you know, bring soil in, you know, put, put uh some French drains around it. So the, the mineral water touches landscaping, it kills it. So this mineral water is really tough on landscaping. So we will have to do some special things to make sure that the landscaping grows and, and flourishes on the riverbank.
Yeah, that's, I saw that um, the French drain that was called out and I assumed that's what it was. And then you direct that water just back into the river at some point or, or points.
Back, we have a discharge permit from the state that allows us, even though this water naturally goes to the river, we use it and, and don't put any chlorine in it, but we have to have a discharge permit. And there's a point for that discharge and so we'll collect it and put it all in the river with our discharge permit.
Right. Um, and then there's a, what was the, the flow level for the high water line that was indicated on the drawings?
So I think the high watermark, the natural, um, the average high watermark was noted on the drawings. So, so we're, all of the improvements that we're showing are above the high watermark, including the landscape uh along the edge of the river. So as Steve had kind of mentioned, uh, uh, this, the improvements related to landscape and the hot springs are all above the high watermark. Uh, below the high watermark, we would be kind of triggering the four oh four permit, which we're probably not going to do with this uh, with this project. It'll be staying above the high watermark in order to do the planting above it and then the project above that.
And do you know what that flow, you know, uh, cubic feet per second? Do you know what that, that line represents relating to that?
That line was determined by FEMA. So that's a, a line that, that is in of all of our development is. And I, I, we don't have our engineer with us, uh, but he could probably talk more to that. Uh, but it's, it's a line that's, you know, in, in all of our development is kind of the, the, you know, defined by FEMA and the high watermark. So I don't know at this point what that, what the, the CFS is uh to get water to that level.
Okay, yeah, I know, and then from what I understand, the way the new code is, um, at least the way it relates, relates to the Roink Fork is based on a, a core of engineers' value, which I haven't been able to figure out. Well, I haven't spent much time trying to figure it out, but um, so that was just a curiosity. But you've asked some of the other questions that I had um regarding the, you know, the project as it relates to the river. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Grosskup, please.
Hey, thanks. Um, I, it's kind of, some of this is feedback. Um, Doug, you kind of asked for some of those comments, so I'm just giving some of those. Um, one observation I have is that um, looking at the parking design, I just wish that there was ways that you had created spaces to walk through so that, you know, if you're a patron of the hot springs with family and all the baggage, the strollers, who knows what? You know, I just always find that challenging how to navigate through. And so it just, if there was some very obvious, not just wayfinding, but some kind of, I see the walking that would take the employees or CDOT, you know, through the main two entranceways into your, your parking area and then along the hotel. But that was one comment. And then I'm also wondering just the, the walkway that goes from the future hotel to the new entrance building and even from the uh, kind of the circular where you could see people probably doing some drop off. I just hope that that's a kind of a supersized walkway, you know, a minimum of five feet and just um allows for a lot of traffic. So people aren't stepping off or it just accommodates a big volume that you're likely to, to be seen. So that's one. Um, I'm wondering if you plan to do anything with EV ready or maybe getting all the way to some towers? Because I wonder if your folks might be utilizing some of that. So just thinking through putting the conduit in now might make sense. Um, wanted to ask with the, um, with the pool that is in the enclosed, one thing I didn't understand, is that a heated pool? Or is it more meant to be just like um the other pool, which I think is not? Well, it's not a hot spring, so it's not like heated above. It, it's more just like a swimming pool like we would have at the rec center. Um, so that was a question I had. Um, and then the last is that um, with those garage door opening in the, in the, in the restaurant space, to me, it appears that you're going to have a very high ceiling pitched roof in there. So then do these garage doors just open up? And does that interfere with somehow that elevated ceiling? That was just something I was trying to figure out as you were talking about that.
Let me start with first ones and then Michael, have you answered the, the garage door ones? Uh, Catherine, there is, as you can look at the drawing, there's actually, you want to bring the drawing back up, Doug? If you look, uh, this is a, a, the north is at the top. So if you look on the east and west side of the parking lot, there is wide expansive parking lot or, or walkways uh on both sides. Uh, and I think those are eight to ten feet. Is that, is that correct, Doug?
The width of those are not, they're not ten feet, Steve. I, I, they're closer to between six and eight feet.
Six and eight feet, okay.
Yeah.
They're, they're eight feet.
So, so there is walkways on both sides of the parking lot. Um, the, the pool, uh, the, the existing pool is actually heated. We maintain the water temperature around ninety-four degrees. It's heated with the mineral water through heat exchangers. Uh, so we take the mineral water, uh, in one source that comes in at a hundred and nineteen degrees. We run it through heat exchangers. Uh, we take the heat out of the water and put it into this pool. This is like a big heat sink. Uh, the new pool, we don't have enough heat for. It will be heated, uh, but it's a, it's half the size of the other pool. So uh, it will be heated uh with a natural gas unless we can, you know, it'll be heating with natural gas two months out of the year. The rest of the time, we'll, we'll have enough mineral water to heat it. But we have to have a backup system on the new pool. Mike, you want to answer the question on the garage doors?
Yeah, yeah, the, the overhead garage doors, you're right. I, I do have a, a big vault in that area. And what, what I need to work on is the structure in relation to those overhead garage doors and make sure that we're not lowering that ceiling when those are open. I don't have the answer to that right now. I know that I need to work with structure on finding a way for it to allow those garage doors. You know, if they can go as high as possible before they start to arch back, it is preferably what we will try to do there.
And as far as the EV ready, uh, we, we are putting some of those over at the, the caverns village project. So I can see that we'd be putting some in this project also.
Right.
And, and then just one more, which is, I know we've said ten, but then I saw that you're doing three more and kind of adding to the existing portfolio pool. So you have three more down along the riverside. Is that accurate? Yeah, okay.
Yep, that's correct.
Just, so it's thirteen new, basically.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Catherine, just to be clear, the, the cabanas um that are located down here also have a small, a small pool spa associated with each cabana. So, so there's four small spas right there, too.
Great, thank you.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Uh, moving on, Commissioner Schacter, please.
Thank you. Just a quick question I couldn't see in the detail, um, Doug or Steve, um, number of bike racks and placements?
I think we have, yeah, Julie's here too. We have that in our narrative, so we'll be working to locate those.
I can't remember what we said.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I think we'll take what we've proposed in our narrative and make sure that we have locations for those.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions to the applicant at this point? No, um, I got a quick question to staff, actually. Gretchen, um, and, and I may be stuck in the old code, but looking at this parking lot um with the landscape, I guess you can call them dividers between the two things, giving the two parking areas. Is that all we require nowadays? No more, no more uh parking islands and any other stuff that, that went away, right?
That is correct. Yep, we changed the code to allow people this option. And specifically, if you recall, we adopted um the ability for people to use these, what we call bio swells. Um, in essence, this uh, some, at least a portion of these landscape dividers, as you call them, are draining the parking lot.
Right, excellent. Okay, so that was one. And as per code, do we require this parking lot to be paved?
Uh, that is a requirement, yes. If you recall earlier this year, I think it was either January or February, you gave um Steve the um, you, you told him until, uh, he had until the end of December to present a plan to organize the parking lot, come in with a parking lot plan. And then also to, part of that plan requires paving. So this project is going to, is doing all of that. So yes, that's my long-winded way of saying, yes, this parking lot will be paved.
It's always good to hear a little history, so, okay. And, and uh swells in the middle, excellent. Um, that's it. So uh, let's see, at this point, we'll open up to uh public comments. Uh, if anybody's out there in the attendees uh portion of this meeting, please raise your hand if you'd like to comment on this application. And uh, I see, I see none, I see nobody raising their hand. So um, I guess at this point, maybe we'll reiterate that you guys can still send in your comments to City Hall um, or dropping it off at City Hall or send it to Gretchen Rice Hill uh in the Community Development Department. Uh, if there's no other questions to the applicant or to staff, uh, I will entertain a motion to continue this item to, I think it was November ninth, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
November ninth uh, for us to uh, take formal actions that night. Uh, so I see no uh, see no, no more questions. So uh, uh, entertaining a motion to continue.
Mr. Chairman, I'd uh move that we continue item twenty-seven twenty to our next scheduled meeting on November ninth.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay, excellent motion and a second. Um, any, any more discussion? Do you guys have anything else to say to the applicant, uh, suggestions that they asked for? Or any other comments? No, see none, we must be happy with it, so that's a good sign. Uh, if I see nothing, then I will call for the question.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Shaver.
Uh, yes, to continue.
Commissioner Zippelley?
Yes, to continue.
Commissioner Schacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Grosskup?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
And Commissioner West?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Excellent, thank you, Steve. Uh, thanks applicants, thanks guys, and we'll see you uh, I guess it's about a week and a bit, two weeks, almost, ten days uh for the conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, that was, that was good. Uh, item B of tonight's new items, we're gonna jump right into it, is planning item fifty-one dash twenty, consideration of a special use permit for retail marijuana establishment in the M-two mixed-use central core zone district of the Glenwood Meadows. And Steve, if we could bring some people over.
Marco, do you have the list of those folks or should I read them aloud?
We might need to read them aloud. I've had a few here, Trent.
Um, no problem. Let's go with, let's go with Chris Hawkins.
Okay.
John Diet, Jessica Scardini, Scardina, sorry. Mike Maple, David Belode, Paul Glenn, and Robert McBregor. Okay, um, I believe that I've got everybody that is on my list. There may be somebody that I'm missing and there are a couple of phone numbers who I just can't tell who they are. So if there's anybody who's an attendee out there and would need to be or like to become a panelist, just raise your hand and I'm happy to move you over.
Okay, excellent, that sounds good. Thank you, guys. And uh, I think we're gonna start with Trent.
All right, and I'm going to share my screen with you all. And if you'll give me a head nod or a thumbs up once you, you're seeing your reflection there. Got that on your end, Marco? Okay, thank you. All right, well, this is a special use permit for the Kind Castle. It's planning file fifty-one twenty. And the applicant proposes a retail marijuana establishment in the mixed-use core M-two district. Um, I want to point out that the subject property, which is circled in yellow here, um, is also within the Glenwood Meadows development and subject to the zoning and development plan therefore. As you can see, um, some of the adjacent property to the northeast is also zoned into um as well as some resort properties on to the northwest, or I'm sorry, to the northeast and to the southwest, you'll see some RH residential high density. And in the green that you'll see here, that's um our HP's own district. Current proposal is for an approximately forty-five hundred square foot two-story building. Um, of that square footage, uh approximately thirty-three hundred square feet is proposed for the retail marijuana establishment, whereas eight hundred square feet is reserved for a future, future retail tenant. Um, and as you all know, section seventy twenty thirty, table thirty point one outlines this use some as a special use, um requiring a special use permit review by the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as by city council in this instance. Section seventy thirty thirty E eleven outlines the marijuana establishment review criteria, B being the requirement for city and state licenses required prior to the operation of the use. C, the no retail marijuana establishment may be located within five hundred feet of the existing public or private school. In this case, um, Yampa Mountain High School is the closest and is located um over approximately seventeen hundred feet. Um, these uses are also not allowed within nine hundred feet of other retail marijuana or medical establishments. And the closest facility in this instance is the Green Dragon on Deveraux Road uh to the northwest, which is located over eighteen hundred feet away. Uh, they also are designated in specific zones, like commercial zones in this case in the city. D is that the hour of operations must be from eight AM to seven PM. Um, two, D two, that a signed permit is required. Um, of course, that would be required prior to installation at the site. Three, that the storage of marijuana may not exceed twenty-five percent. Uh, in this case, we're looking at approximately nine percent on storage on site. Four, there shall be no discernible odor. Um, again, we always um look at this issue closely and recommend a condition for any nuisance violations. Um, you know, I'll, I'll point out that, you know, in, in the past, our, our issues have been with cultivation facilities, not with retail or medical uh sales facilities. These uses must also comply with the general special use criteria, um, which are outlined in section seventy sixty fifty E three. These uses must also comply with the general special use criteria, which are outlined in section 706050E3E2. And it shall be compatibility with surrounding area. In this general vicinity, we see lodging, multifamily residential, retail, banking, office, and services. This use certainly seems to be in line with those. Two, that the impacts have been adequately minimized, again, that odor potential that we discussed previously. Also, based on the review comments, we have had some discussions about traffic impacts related to the issues. Not that we anticipate any that cannot be mitigated, it's just that there may need to be some consideration for either, you know, some form of restricted access there, whether it be a four-way stop at the adjacent intersection or ride-in, ride-out to this facility. The engineering department has requested some additional comments to address that, which we, which we would need, I mean, prior to any development phase for this. Three, that is consistent with the general purpose and intent of the code. Some of the things that it aligns with are the promoting orally efficient and integrated development within the city, as well as regulating the development of uses and their impacts on surrounding properties in the city. E2, that the property, I'm sorry, four, that the property shall comply with all applicable standards. We have identified some, some areas where the applicant needs to make revisions to the application. What you're seeing here on this slide is actually reflective of changes that they have already made. We don't have any reason to believe that they would not be able to be in compliance with both the Glenwood Meadows zoning and development plan, nor any other applicable city requirements. But, you know, just for an example, if you look at this, I believe this is the south-facing elevation. From what you have in your packet, the applicant's already gone ahead and added some, some glazing to this facade to incorporate one of the requirements. On the, on the right here, you'll see a revised site plan where they've, they've actually increased landscaping to, to meet the buffering requirements from some of the adjacent uses there. So they're already well on their way to, to addressing some of the comments the staff has provided. Five, conforms with the comprehensive plan. As there in the staff report, this property is kind of split-zoned, or split-designated, rather, between mixed-use and parks, open space designations. However, as you know, this property was also rezoned recently. So it's clear that this use is in line with the intent of the M2's own district. It does seem to address numerous community goals, such as encouraging sustainable economic development. We maintain the city as the regional center of Garfield County, preserving our small-town character, convenient transportation, infill development, social diversity, and preserving natural resources. I will note that one of the actual objectives in the comprehensive plan for a lot of these is infill development and utilization of existing services and utilities. And that's how it kind of helps to meet some of these, these overarching community goals. Six, minimizes adverse impacts to health, safety, and welfare, and we have not identified any issues related to that. The reviewing agencies that responded to this were the electric department, who outlined the need for meeting the city's line extension policy, noting a potential conflict between the proposed bicycle parking and a transformer location at the northwest corner of the site, and the need for electric load information. Engineering, as I discussed previously, addressed the, the need for some conversations and updates to the traffic analysis that was provided, and some conversation discussion around that restricted access, as well as just the need for updated utilities. Public Works also made mention of some of the, the requirements for line extensions to this site, and the need for electric load requirements, pedestrian access, and fire suppression. Again, some of those comments were even prior to the applicant submitting application, and bike pedestrian access, for instance, has been since addressed. Transportation manager also outlined the need for bicycle parking. Again, we, we may need to revise that exact location, but the applicant has proposed the required three spaces. Today, I want to note that in Civic Clerk, I added numerous public comments that we have received that were not included in your packet on Friday when it was first sent out. I did upload that to Civic Clerk, and you should have access to those. But we received comments from many of the representatives of adjacent properties that contain businesses and/or multifamily apartments. Richard Myers, if you remember, associated with the Lofts Development. Mark Maicich actually is in connection with the Kind Castle, but also is a resident of the city. Navin Diamond represents the Residence Inn and Marriott Hotels across the street. Steve Schoflick, I believe, was a representative, or I may be getting those backwards, of another adjacent property. We also received a petition from 19 separate individuals that are in support of this application, many of whom are adjacent property, adjacent citizens, I would say, maybe not necessarily property owners. Section 706030G1D allows you to recommend a city council approval, approval with conditions or denial. Of course, in this instance, tonight, we will continue this application until November 9th to allow for the receipt of additional public comment due to kind of the way we're doing business now during COVID. Staff does recommend approval of the action item 1 tonight, but the finding conditions, we listen on page 8, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Okay, thank you, Trent. Questions to staff from the commission at this point? We'll start with Commissioner Shaver, please.
Thanks, Trent. What, what requirements exist in the meadows that don't exist within the city's standard requirements that might be pertinent to this project?
Honestly, George, not many. Tell you just a little bit of the backstory, because the meadows, when it came into the city back in the early 2000s, was the eventual basis for some of the, the city's commercial design standards. So a lot of the things that we took from, from those are what we see today in our other commercial districts. You know, specific to this application, you know, I could point out that it was the glazing on, on the building, the front windows that, that needed to be increased by the applicant.
Okay, thank you. And just as a clarification to me, on the city's line extension, do you have any detail about what they were looking for from the electrical department?
Not just electric, George, but many of the utilities were not necessarily stubbed out for this location. You know, this, this property was actually kind of a resulting parcel from various subdivisions that occurred in Glenwood Meadows. So the applicant just needs to be aware that there's gonna be some additional information needed, which, you know, it, we typically get at the construction plans phase for grades to adjacent water, sewer, and electrical utilities.
So all those utilities exist at the property boundary, but they'll have to bring them into the property?
Yeah, they weren't previously stubbed out. There will be some, some, some graining and, and some deeper lines to get to this property, but, but they're available.
So street cuts and curb cuts, and that's, well, probably a curve there. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions to staff? Let's see, Commissioner Grosscap, please.
Just one, Trent. So your memo talks about, you know, the special use permit use, and then additional retail space, but could it be divided up so there could be multiple? Just the way it read, it, it seemed like there was a limit.
I, I don't know, well, just based on the size of that resulting retail area, I don't know how many tenants it could, you know, physically hold. But it, it could be multiple tenants, or it could be other uses. You know, one of the things that I, that I did want to take a closer look at was the parking. You know, where, where they're providing parking based on a retail rate, which is, you know, a little bit higher than your office rate or some of the uses. So it would be able to accommodate multiple uses if necessary.
Thank you, and Commissioner Schacter?
Thank you. Trent, good old sign question. Is the meadow sign requirements different than the city, and which would apply in this case?
They are different, and the Glenwood Meadows sign code would apply in this instance.
And I, I haven't looked at it for a while, but is, is the meadows similar to ours, more restrictive than ours?
I would say it's more restrictive than ours generally.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? To Trent, I just, I'm just got a curiosity here. Is, is, does this building have fire suppression?
Yeah, I believe this building would require fire suppression.
Is there a square footage cut off for that, or is it just because it's commercial, I guess? Well, I'm just curious.
Yeah, well, you know, generally, by default, I think most commercial buildings are required to have fire suppression. But then that out there, also other applicable standards, such as uses, you know, chemical store, I mean, there are a lot of variables that go in there.
Okay, great, thank you, Trent. Applicant, would you care to present your item tonight? Please state your name for the record.
Sure, thank you. Chris Hawkins with Alpine Planning, and I'm gonna share my screen if that's okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you for taking some time to look at our application. We're very excited about the site and all the support we're getting for it. The site, you're very aware of it. The team, I did want to introduce the team. Besides my firm, we've got PSTM Architecture and Planning, who's been dealing with the architectural plans and landscaping plans. And Kamagre Engineering, doing the civil planning, including the utility plan work. Vicente Setteberg is our legal counsel. Apex Consulting Engineers has been helping us out with traffic and then surveying team as well. The site itself, just a little bit, there are utilities in the surrounding rideaways. You can see the lines coming through here, this is, I think, the sewer line. This might, actually, that's, I think sewer water. Electric is stubbed out here, we'll have to put another transformer in someplace over here, most likely. Telcom is available to the site, it's already here. Natural gas is adjacent to the site. There is this 15-foot access and maintenance easement right here. I just found out tonight that this is a non-exclusive easement, which is very important to us, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. But the site's pretty gently soaping, and then it gets steeper just due to the fill from Wolfshone Road back here. This site plan is our revised plan, apologies for not getting this to you sooner. I did want to hit the high points, because I know this might be the only time that you would see this type of design, and you're, you're concerned about it, and we understand that we are too. We have added street trees, both on Flat Top's View Drive and Wolfshone. We've added a landscape buffer here in the front, and I'll show some details on that in a minute. We've added an amenity bench up here on the sidewalk with some trees surrounding it. We have reoriented the dumpster enclosure in this direction. However, in light of this being a non-exclusive easement, I think we're gonna move the dumpster enclosure back in here. We need to work with staff on this to make sure it's okay, and use retaining walls to enclose it with a roof. And then we can add two more parking spaces back here. We want to exceed the parking standards, we don't want it to be an issue at all. We meet the standards today, we're providing a surplus. And I think that was it on the high points. Bike parking is over in this location. Existing sidewalk coming around, a new sidewalk headed down this way towards the community center, it stops at the property line. I did also want to point out that we're very sensitive to the site context with this landscaping buffer in here and a six-foot-high wood opaque fence. Really, just to try and block those views from the community garden back this way. And I'll talk a little bit about compatibility. Here's some of the landscape buffering. This is the landscape buffering that's basically on the front corner of the parking lot, on that kind of northwest corner. This would be it on the northeast corner, right here, up against the building, over by the utility boxes. This is the, basically, a detail of the southwest corner of the parking lot, et cetera. So we, we have been taking those measures to better meet the development agreement standards. This is the civil plan, it will be revised to match the final plan we come up with. Most likely, since this is a non-exclusive easement, we'll have some retaining walls back in here now, with adding two spaces in here, and maybe the dumpster enclosure back here. But again, we just want to coordinate that with staff. One other thing on this, why I did want to talk about access while we're looking at this. I, we have to get back to our, with our transportation engineer to have him make recommendations on this. Our preference is this, for this to be a full turning movement for both westbound and eastbound traffic to come in here with potentially the need for stop signs here, to make this safe and be able to turn it. Would obviously have to re-stripe Wolfshone Road in here, because there's some stripes out in here now. But that's all stuff our transportation engineer is gonna make recommendations to city staff, and city staff will approve the final plans on that. The elevations, I, I'm not sure if this is gonna be the first stick-built retail marijuana store on the west slope, maybe? I don't know. John would probably know better than I, but it'll, I think this is probably a first for Glenwood Springs, a brand-new store. And we're really proud of the design. We didn't want this to look like a retail store at all, we wanted this to fit into the neighborhood, be sensitive to it, and we're sensitive to the context. And so this is the main store itself, and this is the future retail space. The plan is only for one tenant in this space at some point in time, that's it, no more than one, and it would just be general retail. And so the elevations, you've already seen. As far as the first four uses, future retail on this side with full separate mechanical toilet. These are completely structurally independent. We do have a little bit of a connection between, if needed, if not, this'll just be a firewall. In our store, obviously, we have a big lobby, we wanted to have a big lobby here, just so there's not a line outside, and people are inside. And then a very nice interior store. And then the upper floor, there's an office, product storage, bathrooms, mechanical. And I did need to make a correction, and apologies for this, sometimes we copy and paste. And in this case, we made an error from another store site. There will be product handling in here and putting it in packages, so there will be flowers actually being processed in here. But with the odor mitigation, we have, there won't be a smell outside, but that's what this room is for. This would be actual employees working up here for product packaging products, handling products, et cetera. And it's completely separate from the public space below. This is a non, this is only employee access upstairs. As far as compatibility, Trent touched on this briefly, but we've also wanted to just include this for the record. It's located in an intensive mixed-use residential and commercial area. There's a nice open space buffer to the east, to the community center. We're providing a very attractive commercial building design in accordance with the Glenwood Meadows design standards. The building was purposely located on the west side of the site for access, but also as well to move it away from the community garden area. And this allows us to do an intensive landscape and fence buffer to the community garden. It's about a 99-foot setback to the eastern property line and about 143 feet to the community garden. We're also committed to no pole-mounted sign, no depiction of marijuana leaf or green crosses on any sign. So again, this is on building advertising, we're not talking about publication advertising, we're talking about signs on the property here. Residence Inn to the north, it's about 135 feet away from the facility, we're very pleased they're supportive of this application. Glenwood Meadows, sorry, Glenwood Apartments to the south, that's about 190 feet from the facility. Lofts at Red Mountain, 75 feet, again, another project that supports the store. And we'll have mechanical conditioning to mitigate odor. We have some specs in your packet that's basically twice as much as required with these air purifier T6000 units. And as Trent has indicated, the city has generally not received odor complaints for stores, just cultivation, and there's no cultivation at the site. Odor is not a problem, and then this, there's also state-of-the-art security fire and carbon monoxide systems, which ensure compatibility. The current lot 11B property owner, I'll let him speak for himself, Robert and Mike are also participating in this process and are available to speak tonight. As far as minimizing store impacts, As far as minimizing store impacts, we've got the odor control, traffic impacts, we're going to provide an updated traffic study and as we indicated, we may have to mitigate with some restriping, potentially some four-way stop signs. Our goal is to get full turning movements into the site if possible. If not, we're okay with right in, right out only, but we think it's going to be more functional and safer to have full turning movements. Public Works Traffic Study, as I indicated, more than adequate parking right now. We had to drop it to 15 for that landscape buffer, but now with this new information, I think we're going to be able to get it backed up to about 17 spaces. So we'll be providing about six more spaces than required for the, for the retail store and that future retail space. We're consistent with the purposes and intent of the code. The code standards are really set up to ensure public health, safety and welfare with all of your specific store standards and requirements, which I'll go through. It promotes orderly and efficient and integrated development within the city and Glenwood Meadows, especially with its very detailed development plan and annexation agreement. Housing is already been provided in Glenwood Meadows with more to come in the future. And the use specific standards will ensure no adverse impacts. The store meets the applicable requirements of the development code and the Glenwood Meadows Development Agreement. And natural hazards have been mitigated with the overall development, specifically with the debris flow structure up above that's maintained by the metro district. And we actually have to pay into that as part of that maintenance with a building permit. Stormy, it's the applicable code standards. We've submitted the license. The buffer requirement has been met with twice as much separation as required with about 8, 1,880 feet. The empty zone district allows use and the store will comply with operational requirements for procurement, display, dispensing, excuse me, dispensing, labeling, sanitation, security and other local and state requirements. And I'll just mention this. I haven't talked to John about this, but a big part of training employees, they're going to have to understand the pain and suffering and all the money that goes through these processes to get a story entitled in that, that any violation of the rules that are set forth in the store for the city, if they're violated, will result in immediate termination. There's going to be a no tolerance policy when it comes to the operational requirements and this will be ingrained in every employee just to make sure it's operated in accordance with your rules. Hours of operation will be met. The sign permit for building mounted signs only. Storage area met and odor mitigation. Already talked about this drainage, we're going to tie into the overall Glenwood Meadows Drainage System and the project engineer has been in discussions with appropriate entities and public works and will provide the required study with the building permit. It's not going to be an issue to provide drainage on this site. It's part of the original Glenwood Meadows Drainage System and it's our assertion that the volumes generated from the site will easily be accommodated in the existing storm drainage facility and that will be proven at the time of permit. Very detailed civil engineered design requirements will be met through detailed construction documents, I mean, all the city standards. And we will complete a geotechnical report before we have to submit for the building plans. We actually have to get that early on to have the structural engineer design the store. So we'll get a firm out there probably fairly quickly after any approval. As far as the comprehensive plan, again, the commercial development is envisioned for this site with mixed use. Uses retail, office, restaurant, entertainment. I think in addition, this really complements, the store really complements the overall development in Glenwood Meadows. The scale of this facility in the addition where you tell really helps maintain a small town character. It's kind of on the Wolfson Road entry into Glenwood Meadows, so to speak, and you've got large hotels across the street to the north. You've got the lofts and you step up to the lofts and then you've got the apartments behind you. So it's a really great scale as you enter into this part of Glenwood Meadows. The next part's really important because it's a walkable retail destination. It will reduce traffic, traveling outside the subdivision for marijuana products. And so that's a good thing. And just to have that mix in the neighborhood. Will also draw from traffic for regional shoppers that are already using Glenwood Meadows to shop. And in essence, we really think it provides a great synergy for Glenwood Meadows as a secondary center. Already talked about the transitional site and then attractive storefront development as well. The store will integrate with the city's multimodal transportation system. Sidewalks connect all Glenwood Meadows so people can walk from their hotel room, they can walk from their residence, they can bicycle, they can park their bike, they can drive, they can take a bus. There's a bus stop just down the street to the west. So it's really got great access and more than required parking. Economic development, again, this is important. You have a person who really wants to open a business in Glenwood Springs. This creates an opportunity to spend a lot of money in Glenwood Springs constructing it, but it also creates new livable wage jobs for about 12 to 15 people, which is significant. That, that's a nice addition to the community economically and it enhances Glenwood Meadows as a regional shopping center too. Just in summary, it promotes long-term, sustainable, diverse economic development. It maintains Glenwood Springs as a regional tourism and retail base. It preserves the small town character. It addresses transportation and multimodal access. It direct development to locations, building forms that are cost-effective to serve. There's already infrastructure there, no cost to the city. And it supports social diversity and preserves natural resources. The referral comments, I just briefly want to talk about this. We'll provide the engineered utility plan with all details and required specifications. We'll provide the updated traffic analysis by Colorado PUD and work with staff to come up with a plan that works best for the city. The geotechnical report and drainage report will be provided and fire code will be met. And it's any size commercial building has to be sprinkled. I checked on this early on, so we'll have to meet the fire code standards for commercial use. Electrical department will show the transformer, transformer location. We'll coordinate bicycle parking with the electrical box and transformer locations. There's lots of options for bike parking, so we can adjust this really easily. And we'll comply with city line extensions to the site as required. And then just want to make this note, the, the distance to schools, we're we're basically, it's 1,750 way from the applicant's location, which exceeds the city's minimum requirement of 500 feet. It's basically threefold further away. Distance to Green Dragon, we're about twice as far away. And again, here's our site at the bottom. And then last, you know, the area map of the new buffers, we're still well outside those buffers for the new map. I did want to point out, we understand the commission will only apply the laws that currently exist. We just wanted to point out that we're well outside the buffer requirements that you're thinking about establishing for your last agenda item tonight. Really appreciate your time. Glad to answer any questions you have and look forward to working with the city for a great development. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Back to the commission unless there's any other person out there that wants to speak in favor of this part of the application. No, I see none. Okay, then let's go to the commission for questions. And Commissioner Shaver, please.
So I think Trent mentioned that the storage area was nine percent. Code. Addresses, I think, just the marijuana part of the facility, which is 3,270, so roughly 800 feet is the allowable. And maybe this is a question for Trent. Is, there's the storage facility, I think, on the upper level? Or a question for Chris, I guess. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
And that's on your plan? It was on the left side of the building?
Yes.
How, how big is that area?
Hang on, let me check real quick.
While he's checking, George, you know, I'll just point out, initially, I think part of that regulation and that requirement was to limit folks coming into the city for storage-only areas. You know, we didn't want to create the, the situation where folks were obtaining a license just to only store materials from the front range, potentially creating an odor nuisance.
Yeah, it's shown as about 290 square feet.
Okay, so even if the sorting area were counted, then it's not the intent per Trent's comments to create a problem for this, this applicant or this particular situation.
No, not at all. That storage room is small enough just for this store. And yeah, it'll, it'll work out fine with the air, air purifier units that were proposed.
Yeah, I appreciate your comment, Trent, because I was confused as to what, what the intent of that requirement was. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaver. Any other questions? Commissioner Grosscut.
Just wanted to ask the applicant, and he can speak, just if there's any interest from another retail lessee to that side portion. Just curious, who else might be involved in this new building in our community?
I am not aware of anything. John Diet is on the phone. He's my client. John, do you want to speak to that? If so, feel free to raise your hand. We'll have, I'm guessing this is going to get continued to the November meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we'll try to have an answer for you before that time, if that's okay.
Okay, no more questions. I see none. We'll open it up to the public at this point. Anybody would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand if you're in the attendee section here of the Zoom meeting. And I see no hands going up. So I will close the public portion for the hearing tonight, but we'll extend the submittal of emails or letters or phone calls, I guess, to the Community Development Department. Gretchen, no, this will be going to Trent, Trent Hyatt at the Community Development Department. Or the drop boxes at City Hall or what is it, 108 West Street? I mean, sorry, 108 West 9th Street. That's it. In Glenwood Springs.
101 West 8th Street.
That's it. With those numbers, I just didn't know which ones. Okay, great. If I see no public comment and no more questions, then I would think I'm entertaining a motion to continue to the November 9th meeting.
Move with planning item 51-20, the special use permit that we continue this item to our next scheduled meeting on November 9th.
Thank you.
And I would second that.
Okay, motion in a second to continue. Any additional comments or suggestions for the applicant from the commission? I see none. I will call for the question.
Okay, Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Siperly?
Yes.
Commissioner Dane?
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Grosscut?
Yes.
And Commissioner West?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. Thank you applicants.
Thank you.
Tonight applicant and we'll see you on the 9th. For the conclusion. Thank you. Is everybody okay? Can we keep going or anybody needs a timeout for a few minutes? Nobody's jumping. We'll keep going. Item C on the new item list tonight is planning item 5420, consideration of allocation extent. Review application for the construction of a new 11,000 square foot vehicle storage and office building and a 2,100 square foot communication building with a 60-foot tall communication tower at the Colorado Department of Transportation Maintenance Facility.
Okay.
Gretchen, right?
Yeah, it's mine and I fixed the problems with my share screen, so let's give this a go.
Excellent. Then do we need to bring in some people?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Rob Levinson and Aaron, if you could, Lucero, if you could bring both those in, Steve, I'd appreciate it.
Yep, I think everybody is good. Let me know if somebody can't hear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm assuming Marco, can you, can you all see my screen?
I can.
Okay, great. Here we go. All right, this location and extent application considers improvements to CDOT's existing facility, which is located here at 202 Centennial Street. The current site includes two maintenance and office buildings, maintenance. Sorry. Maintenance and office buildings. There's a communication building here in this corner and this is a storage shed. There are some mag chloride tanks here and fuel storage there. Earlier this year, the commission and council approved a minor subdivision of CDOT's parcel, which allowed CDOT to trade this parking area here in exchange for about 9,000 square feet of the ground floor of the cap, new caverns build, building, which is currently under construction on this adjacent parcel. See, now it's remaining parcel out, which is outlined in red on your screen is about 3.1 acres. So CDOT's proposal is to consolidate all of its buildings on this smaller parcel. It will demolish the two buildings you see in red here here and here in this corner, the communication building. And construct two new buildings, which are shown here in yellow. This would be a new vehicle storage and office building and the one here in the corner would be the relocated brand-new communication building. The vehicle maintenance, storage, office building here is about 11,000 square feet and the communication building in the corner is about 2,100 square feet. The communication building includes a 60-foot tall tower on the east. The existing fuel storage and mag chloride tanks are going to be, like I said, consolidated onto the, the smaller parcel and they're, they're here on this end. The staff report included a few images of the of the CDOT facility, the existing CDOT facility. Here are two perspectives. The first, the top one is looking from Deveraux Road and this is the building that's scheduled for demolition. And then, then the other, the bottom photo is looking from Interstate 70. This is the communication building that that's also scheduled for demolition. Again, the mag chloride tanks and fuel storage are going to be moving closer into the property. This building remains as does, does this one here on this end. This location and extent application, as you know, the purpose here is to allow review of projects proposed by all public and quasi-public districts, special districts. The commission considers how the application is consistent with applicable comprehensive plan goals and policies, how it's consistent with the general purpose and intent of the municipal code and how well the application minimizes any adverse impacts to the health, safety and welfare. Regarding consistency with the comprehensive plan goals, my staff report listed out these goals in support of the application. I'm not going to read them, but just state that CDOT's proposal redevelops this existing property. It consolidates and organizes the various uses onto a smaller lot and the, the entire lot and the buildings are more efficient, more efficiently organized. Secondly is, oh, I forgot this one, the comprehensive plan, the future land use map shows that this has a future or a designation as a, it's a commercial designation. And that is defined as allowing retail and services for a regional and local markets. Secondly, my staff report indicated, well, consistency with the general purposes and intent of this code regarding zoning. Secondly, my staff report indicated, well, consistency with the general purposes and intent of this code regarding zoning. The proposed 60-foot tall communication tower, the fuel storage and vehicle wash uses are normally allowed in this zoning district, which I failed to mention is M1 Commercial. They allow those three uses by special review normally. However, as I indicated, this is a location and extent, and as a government entity, CDOT is submitting this application as such, which allows consideration of meeting the overall intent and purposes of the code, conference plan goals, and minimization of negative impacts. The fuel storage and auto wash uses are considered necessary to support CDOT's maintenance of the highway system, while the 60-foot tall communication tower is necessary for the radio waves to clear existing trees and to have a better line of sight with other microwave towers that are located on Sunlight Mountain. I failed to mention earlier that the existing tower is 35 feet. Hope I'm right there. So the impacts are minimized due to the remoteness, relatively remoteness of this property from other commercial and residential uses. And the fact that this property is actually lower in elevation than the surrounding roadways and most properties in the vicinity. The communication tower, I included a sample image in my staff report. This is actually a tower that I think they have in Greeley. And although this Greeley Tower is taller than the one proposed for Glenwood Springs, it does illustrate the look of the tower. I think that the impacts are minimized by its open framework, and it is also tapered as it goes up. So I feel that those two things minimize the overall impact of the 60-foot tall tower. Regarding landscaping, common open space and screening, 10% or about 13,500 square feet is required as open space for this project. 15% or about 20,250 square feet is required to be landscaped. CDOT proposes maintaining the existing vegetation surrounding the property and adding some landscape areas in an island in front of the new maintenance office building and around, a little bit around the new entry gate. The existing and the new landscaped or native vegetation areas consist of about 11% of the overall site. So regarding the plant counts, normally the project would require 50 trees, 200 shrubs, 405 perennials. CDOT does not propose planting any additional vegetation as the site is not going to be irrigated. They are instead maintaining the existing vegetation around the property. The adjacent caverns village will be planted with a vegetative screen along the shared fence line between the two properties. This will result in screening CDOT's proposed use of chain link fencing. I did recommend a condition of approval that requires that chain link fence to be vinyl coated in brown, green, or black, and so that was, like I said, that's a recommended condition of approval. Exterior lighting, CDOT didn't include an exterior lighting plan with this application. So again, I've included a condition of approval that the building fixtures need to be shielded, and the parking lot lights shall be full, the fixtures shall be full cutoff. That is, would be in compliance with the city's lighting code. Regarding non-residential design standards or commercial design standards, the code requires certain design treatments, as you know, when the building elevation exceed exceed 30 feet in length, and that, the intention there is to visually break up continuous wall planes. The primary issue is the north vehicle maintenance building slash office building. The elevation there is 227 feet long. This wall is immediately adjacent to I-70. The elevation includes a short three-foot concrete foundation wall and the windows. The building itself will be metal. So I've added a recommended condition that another element be included to help break up the elevation, so it meets the three designed, the three required design treatments. CDOT suggested the use of several pilasters, and they actually provided me an image after, well, that I did not include in your packet. I left it up to them, so there, if they didn't want to include the pilasters, other articulations would work, I think. And I'll let Rob perhaps talk to this, but I think, I think they have landed on pilasters as a fairly simple addition. The east wall of the communication building also exceeds 30 feet without the required elements, but due to the existing vegetation along Deveraux and the limited visibility to the building, I'm not calling for any additional design treatments on this side of the building. It's really a very utilitarian utilitarian building. And then finally, the last criteria is minimizing adverse impacts to the health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the city and surrounding areas. Staff, I found that this project does not negatively impact surrounding properties or the city's inhabitants. This facility provides the necessary highway and interstate maintenance. Additionally, the proposed development actually organizes and defines the access to this property, which is something that is currently lacking. Right now, in my opinion, the access is unclear. It's undefined, and I find it to be a hazard to pedestrians in its current state. So the proposal is that, you know, there's going to be a defined entrance driveway with curb and gutter, so, and then a definite gate, enter, entry gate into the CDOT facility. So as always, we sent the application to the various city departments, and we did receive public comment from, or, sorry, comment from Public Works, Engineering, Electric, and they are mostly, the comments are mostly technical in nature, and CDOT is currently working through the details with the other departments. So tonight, as is with other location and extent applications, we are going to hear public comment and take a vote tonight. So you are required, we just have one action item, and that is consideration of this location and extent review for CDOT's facility and new buildings. You can approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue the application, and I am recommending that you approve the application with conditions, and the seven conditions are listed here, and like I said, they, you know, I've included the conditions about the fencing, the lighting, the building articulation. Oh, I forgot to mention colors, too. The proposed colors for the CDOT buildings need to be the city's, you know, standard earth tone, and the metal roof needs to have a matte finish so that it's not a galvanized glaring roof. So with that, conclude my presentation and stop sharing my screen and take any questions that you might have.
Gretchen, back to the commission. Questions to staff at this point? Commissioner Grosscut, please.
Hi, Gretchen. I had just one question. I'm struggling. My computer is delayed, so just essentially, staff for CDOT would be parking at the new office facility?
Their new facility. That is my understanding.
Or the one that has, you know, it's called the caverns village, I think, and so I guess what I'm trying to understand by striking the deal and giving up the other, the parking lot so that caverns village would work and the office space, which is all great. I guess I'm just, the employees, where are they going to be parking?
Well, I, again, I might have Rob clarify, but I do believe that, so CDOT is, they will be occupying, like I said, 9,000 square feet of the ground floor of the new caverns village. So I expect that some of the parking that's along the new entrance driveway will be devoted to CDOT CDOT employees. And then, of course, the others will be parked in the fenced maintenance facility itself, because there are still office uses on that property as well.
So maybe that's my question for the applicant is.
I would like him to clarify. Yeah, that would be good.
I don't quite.
I'm going to go ahead and clarify, Gretchen, if that's okay.
Yes, please, Erin.
This is Erin Lucero with CDOT. I'm the lead architect for our group in property management. We have two kinds of staff in this facility of Glenwood Springs. We have our engineers residency, and they are, as well as State Patrol, Colorado State Patrol is part of that office building. So Colorado State Patrol and the engineering residency, as well as some maintenance administrative staff, will be in this new office building. The staff that are going to be in what we would call the CDOT maintenance site are the maintenance staff, which are the plow drivers, the traffic group, and some mechanics. So there are quite, there are a lot less people parking in the maintenance side for the amount of buildings, because mostly it's just storing of the trucks. So I would say there's probably, there's like 10 people that are going to park in this new building that we're planning on proposing, and then the existing building that's staying there, they're already parking just here, there, and around. The new office building is for all of the employees, so we won't have a lot of traffic in between the two sites. If that's your question.
And did you describe, Erin, like, in the caverns building in which the ground floor is offices, and there's shown parking stalls, surface parking on, I just can't get it to move very well, so basically, that services all of the need there, and then there's just some haphazard parking within the enclosed
Yes.
area.
Yes, that is correct.
And so then Gretchen, there's just no concerns about, I guess I said haphazard. I didn't mean it to sound so chaotic. I'm sure people have done it for a long time, but there's no concerns from staff about just any kind of under-parking situation?
No, not from staff standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Commissioner Sipperly, please.
Thanks. My question is largely regarding the paving surface of the new parking lot, so perhaps this will be better addressed in CDOT. But I see that a lot of the concrete is to be removed, except for the aprons, but I'm not actually clear on whether it is an asphalted parking surface or if it is permeable, such as gravel, which also leads me, having learned about the 100-year flood events that might happen on the downhill property, just a little bit of concern about runoff in terms of 100-year flood event, and do we have adequate drainage basins? Of course, this is all contingent on whether or not this is a permeable surface. One last question that I had is just noticing the size of those mag chloride tanks. I was wondering if the new ones that are reinstalled will be of a different dimension, and/or is there some other way to potentially shield those? I do realize they're kind of tall to put a fence around. Thanks for your comments.
Gretchen, would you like me as the applicant to answer that as well?
That would be perfect. Thanks, Erin.
Okay. So the first question in terms of the paving, it is to be asphalt paving. The concrete that we're showing is at the apron in front of the building, and that's really because we have the trucks coming and going and sometimes sitting there, and so that's just for the longevity of that product. But the area that we will be driving around in will be new asphalt. It's currently asphalt. It's rather old and cracked, so it's going to need to be replaced when we do the grading. So that is that the area of far to the east of the site is gravel, and it is going to stay that, and then that kind of extends into what Gretchen was saying, where the existing landscape area and existing vegetation would remain. So that is that answer. In terms of stormwater management and 100-year floods, this site didn't really address that previously. I think that it was just in its natural state. But since we are redeveloping it, we at CDOT also, and I'm sure all of you require to look at 100-year floods and stormwater, and so the proposed plan for this actually is to capture all the flows from this site, and we plan to do a shared stormwater system with caverns village, and they're going to be collecting our runoff, and they are upsizing, and we've been working with them in that design of upsizing their stormwater filtration system to accept our flows, so that the entire area will be treated prior to, you know, going into the river. Did I get all your questions?
The only other one was, how do we hide those giant tanks?
Oh, yes, sorry. The tanks are existing tanks, and I don't believe that, and I don't know that I can answer this for sure, but typically, the maintenance folks keep those tanks until their time of life is over, and then they buy new ones, and I know that they would, they've been trending towards buying shorter ones, especially in the corridor here, but I don't know that they had in their budget to buy new tanks. They're not really part of the construction project. We could, we could put in a request that, or, you know, ask them, are these going to be, you know, used up here pretty soon, so we can get shorter ones? But it wasn't planned to buy new tanks, since those tanks haven't met their life expectancy yet.
Yeah, I certainly would not want to see the tanks discarded before they're all done, but if the tanks get shorter, will they then get wider? And will the placement that you have work for future tanks? I would assume you'd probably want to have the same gallon capacity.
Rob, do you know if our mag chloride containment is designed so that it could accept the shorter tanks, or is it for the taller tanks? It should be for either, because it's designed to hold the quantity, but I don't know if you know that answer, Rob. Okay. We can, we can look into that and make sure that it would also meet the shorter ones that could be a little bit wider.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions? Let's see, none. Is there anything the applicant would like to, oh, sorry, Commissioner Schacter?
Thank you. Couple of questions or concerns. I guess I'd like, perhaps the applicant, if not Gretchen, to explain why the dramatic increase in height of the tower, and also, is it, I'm presuming, but confirm, is it lighted at night? And what effect that lighting has on the surrounding area? And the other question, and I'm not much of a design guy, getting, building articulation with columns or pilasters will help. I was also wondering, with such a wide expanse, unbroken, and I don't know, does this changing every 50, 60, 70 feet, changing the paint tone, help break up that space as well, since since they still have to submit paint color? So those were just a couple of questions. Thank you.
Sure, and I'll talk to that. So the existing tower, which is for, not really for CDOT, although it's on our property, it's for Division of Public Safety. They have that tower that communicates to the microwave on Skylight Mountain and then goes to Hanging Lake Tunnel. It was on the west end of our site, which is where the only location that we can really put our building, because our site got so much shorter, and so they needed to move it to the east end of the site. And so they needed to move it to the east end of the site. Because of that, that tower is a little bit closer to the hill that's on Deveraux. And there's some trees up there on Deveraux. And so it needs to get taller to clear those trees. Whereas the line of sight from the west end could see up to the mountain a little bit better. So they did, our O I T state people did a calculation of line and site. And they determined that that's the requirement. It is not lit at night. The the tower is not lit at night. The buildings are, we have full cutoff light fixtures that we put at the garage doors for maintenance operations in winter. You know, snowstorms sort of thing. If the people aren't working the plow trucks, they can very easily set the timer to not have those lights on or have them very minimally on, you know, for security purposes. They don't need to be lighting up the whole whole world. We don't normally have power like light poles because we're not driving around and having people parking in there at night the way that you might in a parking lot. So it's a little bit more light directed for the purpose of the maintenance operations. So that's the question related to that. And then I think the third question was with regards to the variation on the back of the building. I I think that and Gretchen showed this as the picture from I seventy and our other building that we have there currently that is about the same length as our new building. You can't actually really see the building. You can see her sand shed because it's really quite tall. But the other building, you can't really see the the variation, even if we put it. So I don't honestly think that it's going to make a huge visual impact, one way or another, for the traveling public driving down that road. But it is going to give a little bit breakup to that plane. And, you know, colors could be discussed as as people want. We we intended to try and match the existing colors of that campus to just let it blend in. But we're always open to any suggestions that Glenwood has.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaver.
I'm curious about the the wash bay or bays for the vehicles and how the the affluent from that is handled.
Well, currently they are washing trucks already, and I believe it is tied to your sewer system. It is outdoors and they have an inlet that is going into the system. So we are going to be moving that indoors. And we will have a sand oil interceptor that pulls all of the sands and crud off of that. And then that goes into the system. So it's going to be an improvement over what they're doing right now.
Okay, thank you. And the the sixty foot tower doesn't require like a red light or whatever, like they have on transmission towers for radio and that sort of thing.
I don't know the answer to that question, to be honest. I can, we can ask Division of Public Safety if they put a red light on that or not.
All right, thank you.
Hey, any other questions? And and since the applicants are already involved in all this, then maybe we'll, if you guys have to add or want to add something to the presentation, go for it. If not, we'll just keep asking questions.
I'm I'll just add a real quick Gretchen did such a great job presenting the project. And and I really appreciate all the things that she said about us trying to make the site more efficient. And and I agree a hundred percent with her on how the traffic flows in this site were not the best. And and we've been working really hard with caverns village to to change the the access to the office building, to the parking lot and to our maintenance facility to really improve pedestrian safety in this area, which I understand had had been. You know, where people walked and parked and drove was all a little bit gray. And I think that that's really being cleaned up with this project. I think that C dot is is challenged to be able to continue our maintenance operations in this tight site. But I think we've been working very well in getting this laid out and appreciate, really appreciate Glenwood considering giving us this whole space to our maintenance facilities and and accepting that that trees are not going to be in best served here and allowing some of that buffer around. But really, we're, we're continuing the same operations that we always have at this site. We're not planning on changing anything. But I think that by building buildings that are a little bit bigger and that actually fit our trucks. If anything, you're going to find that this facility is a little bit clean, more cleaned up with trucks inside the building instead of parked outside. And and hopefully it's actually an improvement for this community.
Excellent. Thank you. Any additional questions at this point? No, we'll see none. Thank you very much. We'll open this up to the public for comments. Anybody here from the public like to comment on this application? Please raise your hand. And again, I see nobody raising hands. So we'll close the public portion. And Gretchen, just to verify or to confirm, we are voting on this tonight. We're not going to extend this or continue this to November ninth.
That is correct.
Can I ask why? I'm just curious because it's an extension and a location extent?
Yeah, yes, Marco, that's correct. The previous location and extent applications, we we heard the presentations, public comment, and we took a vote on. And that's consistent with how we processed what three, two or three city applications thus far.
Okay, very good. Just confirming so everybody knows. I guess I'll entertain a motion in planning item fifty four twenty.
I think Sumner really, really wants to make the motion again.
No.
I want somebody else to make a motion.
Well, I will make the motion, but the problem is I can't see the numbers fast enough, Sumner. You're better. Okay, I will make a motion to, I don't know, approve, I guess, the location and extent review number fifty four twenty with the findings and conditions on page seven.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion on this planning item? If I see none, I'll call for the question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Zipperly.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Schacter?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan?
Yes.
Commissioner Grosskopf?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. But thank you to the applicant for being here tonight. I thank you Gretchen for the thorough presentation. And let's see, we got one more. Shall we just motor through? All right, you guys are thinking too long. We're motoring through. Item D on the new item list for tonight is planning item sixty three twenty. A consideration of a code amendment to section oh seven oh oh three oh oh three oh. Use specific standards of the Glenwood Springs Municipal Code for marijuana related businesses and cultivation facilities. Trent, please.
Thank you, Marco. Moving right along tonight, guys. Good job. I will share my screen with you and just give you a very brief background so you can jump right into it. Let me know once you can see that. You guys see that there? Okay, thank you. Again, this is an update or code amendment related to marijuana related uses in the city. It's planning file sixty three twenty. Just to give you a quick background on this, the current regulations that we have, we've been operating under since September two thousand and fifteen. The basic premise of those regulations is the requirement for a special use permit and buffers to keep these uses from other related marijuana uses approximately nine hundred feet and five hundred feet from schools. If you remember at that time, there was a large discussion about the number of these that were occurring in the downtown area. And that's kind of where those those buffers came from at that time. The Planning and Zoning Commission has been discussing the proliferation of issues for quite a couple of years now. And, you know, finally, more recently, City Council picked that that conversation up and asked the Planning and Zoning Commission, take a look at this. We did so on the various work sessions on July twenty eighth, April twenty fifth, as well as September fifteenth. And through the various map reviews, conversations, comparison of other other communities' regulations, you had a couple directives for us. The first being to increase the buffers for schools and marijuana related uses up to a thousand feet for both, as well as to add parks, mental health facilities and drug treatment facilities to that list of buffers. You also had some questions about the occurrences of a marijuana related use, such as Martins on the current location in North Glenwood is is going to move locations to West Glenwood. But what happens when that that use ends? You know, how do we deal with that? You know, we have been operating under the the idea that after a three year period, which is the typical vest rights period in the city of Colorado, that that use would then expire. And then it would open up kind of the map in that vicinity to allow for another one. We made that clear, or at least attempted to in the proposed regulations tonight. We also talked about a density related to the city's population and kind of the current number of of facilities that we had in the city, either approved and in operation, proposed and or forthcoming apps. And and that would put us at approximately eleven. And we assumed that our our population is going to increase once we get the census for this year. But we also wanted to clarify that in all other years that we would work with the numbers from the Colorado Demography Office to to understand that population as they do an update annually. Staff also took the opportunity to add a density for cultivation facilities. Don't necessarily remember you giving us that specific directive, although we we tried to come up with a density that's similar to the two cultivation facilities that we have in town. Also changes to recognize various state regulation terms and revisions that have occurred. So the code amendment approval criteria outlined in section seventy sixty forty C three D three, one being consistency with the comprehensive plan. We find this code amendment to be consistent with the promotion of long term sustainable diverse and economic development and maintaining the city as a regional tourism location. Two, does not conflict with other provisions of the code. We do not find that it conflicts with the code. It actually provides additional guidance for how to manage this use. Three and four, the response is pretty much the same, but they are that the code amendment is necessary to address a demonstrated community need and or to respond to substantial changes in conditions. Again, I think the conversation resulted from our concerns about the proliferation of the use. In the same instance that tax revenues are not necessarily increasing for the sales and revenue in town, even though we have added additional uses, it seems to kind of just be moving around to the various locations. Five, consistent with the general purpose and intent of the code. And this code amendment does appear to be consistent with the promotion of orderly and efficient development, as well as regulating land uses and their impacts. We have not received any comments on this application. We have worked with the police department and the city's attorney office pretty closely. And and the proposal that we bring forth tonight, section seventy sixty thirty G one D allows you to recommend a city council because code amendments have to go through you as well as city council on the approval. Not really approval of conditions or denial. Or you may ask us for a continuance for us to continue working on this for you. Maybe we didn't hit the mark. Hopefully we did. But we do recommend approval of this action item one with the financing conditions on page five. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you, Trent. Questions to Trent? I see. There we go. All right, Commissioner Shaver, please.
Thank you. Trent, is there any official designation of what constitutes a park or a list of all the parks in Glenwood?
We included all of the parks on the map. I would assume that we would, we would utilize the ones that we we looked at. But no, I don't know that we have an official definition of a park. We do have designated parks. You know, for instance, though, you know, something that I would still want to capture that's not designated as a park officially to date would be our three mile confluence. Would, could we better define the exact boundaries of what the park is and not just the city owned property in that area that also runs all the way up the Atkinson Trail to Midland Avenue? Perhaps I think we could probably do a better job of making that definition, George. But I don't think that we do have a definition as it relates to these regs.
Yeah, you know, one thought was the the trails behind Wolfson. You know, I don't think that's called a park, but is it essentially a park?
That's a good question. You know, I mean, I think they would go for the Rio Grande Trail as well. You know, I think it'd be tough to designate the Rio Grande Trail as as an official park. Maybe even those trails behind Wolfson. That would be, that would be tough. Because there's a lot of lands in between each one of those trails. But but perhaps maybe a a a buffer around those could be considered. That's a good conversation for us to have.
Yeah, it's, it seems to me that it's, there should be some some conversation in that way. And and some official definitions as to such. Oh, this seems to be a really, at this, in this state of our of our community, it seems really kind of silly to bring it up, but I think I should. And that is, what if the population decreases vis a vis the number of cultivation facilities, for instance, or or shops?
Yeah, and that that could occur, you know, fifty years from now, sixty years from now, who knows? You know, where a population is going to look like. But and if if a facility was licensed and in operation and in good standing, you know, they, that would then become potentially a legal nonconforming use and they would still have that status and be able to operate.
Great. Okay, thank you, Trent.
Thank you, George. Moving on to Commissioner Schacter.
Thank you. Thank you, Trent. So in essence, if we if we approve tonight, we're basically approving that draft, the draft regulations that you put forth in that draft document.
Correct, Sumner. And you'd be making that recommendation to City Council for final approval.
Right. And then my only other observation, Trent, and I think it was just one quick, one quick typo or or moving on. Under marijuana cultivation, I think on D there you left. In terms of every five thousand people, I think you still had retail marijuana business listed there rather than cultivation in terms of the number of units. That's just a small little tech thing on on the last page of that draft, five D.
I'm sorry, five.
It says a maximum of one marijuana cultivation facility shall be permitted for every five thousand people living within the city. In parentheses, i.e. a maximum of two retail marijuana businesses allowed for a population of ten thousand five hundred people. It should be.
Thank you.
And then I would agree with George. Well, I guess the question related to George, if we didn't have the park definition in there at all. And I I guess I'd have to go back and look at your new buffers with these expanded buffers. Does it make much difference whether we define park or whether we even have park in the definition? Do we know?
Well, I I I'm sorry, I didn't know if that was for me or for George, but I think we should. You know, we could, we could utilize, we could utilize those that were identified on the maps that we have been reviewed and that's attached to your packet tonight. But I think it would be good to give that some more thought because I I know, you know, that question. But I think it would be good to give that some more thought because I, I, I know, you know, that question will come up eventually.
So one consideration would be some kind of formal definition of parks or a differentiation between parks and trails?
Let's just a list that identifies those specific parks that are listed on the map.
Let's have Jen chime in. She has some info, I think.
So we do have a definition of park and recreation areas that are, we actually define parks in O nine O. So Axel Park, Sayer Park, Veltus Park, Horseshoe Bend Park, Red Mountain Park, South Canyons Park, Cardiff Park, which is really part of the airport. Two Rivers Park Reserve, so we maybe lost one over time. Lookout Mountain Park, East Glenwood Park, Three Mile Park, which is defined as Tract J in the Glenwood Park subdivision. Boy Scout Trail, Sister Lucy Downey Park, O'Leary Park. And then there is this other, which is all other areas in the city, which are does dedicated to the city for open space or park purposes or as pedestrian, equestrian, or fisherman easement, or any combination of these by deed subdivision plot or otherwise, which dedication has been duly accepted by the city council. So you could have it be defined in O nine O, other exempting other, which would get to those trails.
Thank you.
Isn't there a Gregory Park too out? Or is that in the county, is that in the county Gregory Park? No, it says City of Glenwood on the, on the sign.
So we could, you know, we could get a list and we could attach it to this regulation. But we do have a definition of parks that isn't O nine O. And so I think if it is different from this list, then we certainly would want to define it.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Grosskamp.
No, mine was just the typo. So all good. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Zipperly.
Thanks. I also was noticing that the definition of a park should really be outlined because if every, you know, bike path and pedestrian way becomes identified as a park, we're going to really squelch this industry. One of our other goals in the comp plan is to be give regional hub for Garfield County. And I did just want, I pulled up some numbers on two of our adjacent communities, which do not have marijuana facilities. The 2010 population of Newcastle was forty five eighteen and the 2010 population of Gypsum is sixty four seventy seven. Essentially, if we are a regional hub, I know Gypsum's not in Garfield County, but that does add a solid additional 10,000 people to our community who might be coming to shop at these stores. You know, I'm less in favor of a numerical cap. I do think that the thousand foot setbacks have gotten us really close to what I believe city council was encouraging us to work on here. So that is, that's my data I have for.
Thank you. Very good point, actually. And Commissioner Schacter.
I'm out.
You're out. Okay. Anybody else? Questions to Trent? No, we'll see none. So since this is a public hearing, we'll invite the public to comment on this. If anybody's here, please raise your hand. And I see none. So I closed the public portion of this hearing tonight and bring it back to the commission for a motion. And let's see, planning item sixty three dash twenty.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Grosskamp.
I'll let you have to note. So I make a motion to recommend approval of this code amendment for the subject number sixty three twenty marijuana, marijuana related uses code with the findings on page five of the staff report.
Okay, did you, I'm just going to throw this out there. Did you want to add the park definition to it, the updated park definition?
Yes, with the one exclusion of the one number about the pathways.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
In a second, any discussion? Commissioner Shaver.
You know, as, as to Carol's point, I'm wondering, do the grow facilities we have, do they exclusively grow just for their sales of their own, through their own company? Does anybody know that?
I'm not certain, George. I know that companies have to produce a certain amount of their, their, their own product. I'm not sure if they're able to sell their products to others. Can't answer that question.
So any retail outlet has to produce a certain percentage of their product that they sell?
Yeah, I want to say that that's thirty percent possibly, but that could be.
I guess it seems to me that, well, maybe not the biggest concern, but one concern that I've heard from people is the, the odors, which are prevalent in the grow facilities. And apparently, to my knowledge, you're not a problem with the retail outlets. I guess I, I like the, the cap that's, that's been defined by this, this directive.
Thank you. All I know is that, and maybe a change, but you, you don't have to grow it in your facility. You can grow it somewhere else, but as long as you grow, I think Trent is right with thirty percent, you're, you're, you're fine. And we could be wrong, but that's state regulation. So we'll have to let the state handle that. Any more discussion on this item? No, I'll see none. Then is everybody clear about what we're voting on here to move? Oh, Commissioner Zipperly.
Just to be sure, I didn't get any backup for striking ten C, eleven E, or three D about the number of facilities permitted. Nobody else is going to be swayed by my Newcastle Gypsum argument. That was the only thing I would change from this, although I understand we've been working on this change for a long time. And we'd all like to wrap it up, but that is the one little bit I'm still stuck on. So any more conversation? Can I, can I change some minds?
Last ditch effort. Never hurts. You, you can't change my mind. I just go right up front. So, but you tried. Anybody else? Let's discuss.
If I may, Trent, what, if we, if we applied the, this draft right now, what's the, we're looking at ten establishments, is that correct?
I would be willing to bet that after we receive our census numbers, you'll be looking at eleven.
Okay. All right. But once adapted and, and subject to any future applications, we'd be ten, ten-ish, is that correct?
Ten to eleven.
Carolyn, my only thought is that should handle most of the retail supply from those communities, I would think.
It's interesting, Trent. I just pulled the DOLA twenty nineteen number for Glenwood Springs, since we wouldn't have the survey, the five year. And it says nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-two. Last year it says nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight. So, you know, and then it says ten years ago, nine thousand five hundred. So they just seem kind of numbers that don't go very, so I'm comfortable with how it is.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaver.
I would, I would think because of the odor issues, and I know they had these similar problems up at the facility just outside of Passalt to, it probably makes better sense, I would think, to have them in a less herb, grow facilities and less urban environment because of the, the problem of odors. Sorry, Carolyn.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? And Commissioner Zipperly.
Can I ask Trent once more? I'm looking at the map and I think right now we have nine permitted, approved retail facilities in Glenwood. Is that right? Or have I missed the number since we approved Martins out there at the Gas and Grass?
Let me see if I can get this correct. Okay, so seven currently in operation.
Essentially, we'd be saying no more.
Yeah, seven currently in operation, two approved, not operating. And
Counting tonight's.
Correct. And, and one proposed tonight, one expected to be proposed in the future for a twelve.
So we would already, if, if we get eighteen seniors moving to Newcastle, we're over our quota for stores already. If we don't make the 10,000 people census cutoff.
We're all right. But you know, again, you know, any, any applications that we have prior to adoption and this code coming into effect would, would be processed around the old regs.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? No, I'll see none. And the motion stands at this point to approve with the added definition of the updated parks. With an exception, from what I understand. We have a second, so I'll call for the question.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Zipperly?
Yes.
Commissioner Dane?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Grosskamp? Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. Thanks, Commissioner. We've been working on this for a while and I think, I think it's working out.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Trent.
Thank you.
For all your work. And that concludes our new items and our hearings for tonight. We'll go through the commissioners quickly if you have any comments. And I'll just look at my screen and I'll start with Commissioner Shaver.
Yeah, Trent, I want, let's see my note here. You know, in our housing discussion, we had talked about, you know, encouraging residences within commercial buildings. Is there anything in the, in the Meadows code that would have saved, taking a building like the one we were considering tonight in the Meadows, disregarding that it's a marijuana facility? Would, is there anything in the Meadows code that would preclude that building having a residence in it with commercials, say, on the bottom level and a residence above?
No, not at all. That was actually a conversation that we did have, you know, based on some of your past comments. I told the applicant that that was maybe a little risky because we, we had conversations about separating the, you know, marijuana uses from residences. And, and they just felt it was cleaner if they just brought straight retail forward. And actually, a lot of the Glenwood Meadows, some of the areas like the Lost Phase Three actually encouraged commercial and mixed use buildings. You know, the applicant chose to go all residential there. So yeah, especially in those M two zones, it's intended to be mixed use areas.
Great. Thank you. I think, yeah, I think that was a wise decision on their part. Because we have that, that conversation in the past about residences and marijuana facilities. Not always considered compatible together. Thanks.
Thank you, George. Commissioner Zipperly.
Um, but I'm glad that we did wrap up that marijuana discussion that has been ongoing for so long. I really don't think I have too much more to comment on other than it's time to clear out around your fire hydrants.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schacter.
Thank you. Just again, appreciation of what I thought was a very good joint workshop with planning and zoning and housing. And I haven't heard about the homework that was assigned yet, but I'm looking forward to our next joint meeting. One other thing, I believe it's tomorrow. Jen, it is open to the public. There's a discussion about Blake Gate and, and South Blake and the new Triumph Development. And I think that's open to the public. I don't know if it's open for input, but at least it's, it's, it's up there and it's on the city site as well as Imagine Glenwood, if people want to listen to that. And the last thing would be an observation request. And I don't know how we, how staff delicately deals with this. But I know the applicants go to a lot of trouble and do all kinds of presentations. And unless the, unless the record has to be totally oral, I assume the documents are part of the record. I, I appreciate maybe a little bit of coaching that they don't have to read to us every word that's on the screen. I really appreciated Gretchen tonight not reading the whole PowerPoint, doing a quick summary. Whereas there was another applicant that seemed to feel compelled to read every word. And I, I think that would be helpful to us if we could perhaps coach the applicants a little more. Thank you.
Hey, Sumner, this is Gretchen. I mean, I appreciate your comments because in the past, other commissions have felt differently. So any direction that we can have from you all as to how you want to see these presentations would help us in the future. Because, you know, I don't really feel comfortable reading the PowerPoint to you all. And I know Trent doesn't, he does an awesome job with his presentation. So any further discussion you want to have with us regarding these presentations would be, like I said, very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sumner. And Commissioner Grosskamp.
Uh, nothing really big to say other than just be aware the kids are going back to school. So you're going to see more cars and all of that issue going on. So not sure if everybody's aware, but K through eight is back. And then high school starts next Wednesday, I believe. So you'll just see some of that more typical behavior in the morning and the afternoons. They have alternative schedules.
Thank you, Catherine. And Commissioner West.
I think I regret that I was unable to do the housing commission meeting last week. And sorry, wasn't able to make that. I'm sure there was a lot of great information there. We'll, we'll all miss Ingrid and Dean. Wish them luck on their pursuits. And I thought it was good to see some well put together projects tonight. Those were clean proposals. So it was, and some fun development in Glenwood.
Excellent. Thank you, Ben. And I echo everything you guys said. And I'm glad the marijuana is moving on. And I'm looking forward to the housing. So that's next. Let's do it. Commissioner Schacter, one more thing?
Sorry, Ben speaking, what do we, what, what, what guidance or what do we do to proactively fill our vacancies, both as alternates and members? And if Ben wishes to step up, does he have to apply to the city clerk? So maybe we need some info out on that. Thank you.
And Jen's up next, so we may hear some of that. Jen, please.
I asked city council if they, as we did with Commissioner Shaver, if they would entertain the idea of having Commissioner West move into the permanent position. But we said we would ask him first and Gretchen said that, that she has done that. And that Ben says he's in. So we'll put that to the city council for formal action next week. And I think what we decided was that we have an application that's pretty recent from when Commissioner West came on. for the alternate seat. So we would attach that to the application and then did ask already, so assuming that that happens, that then we would be advertising for the alternate seats. And city councils has asked specifically if you will help recruit. So looking for, we'll we'll put that information out here shortly. We didn't. We don't have, we haven't done anything yet. It's just this afternoon when the decision was made, so. And I I don't necessarily have anything else. I I don't think that there's any other thing. Gretchen, do you have anything else that I'm missing? I apologize if I.
No, huh?
Just my, just my normal question at the end of the meeting. What's next month look like?
I have no idea.
That's great.
Location and extent review for a city electric building on Deveraux Road. We did have an application for location extent for the parks. We're all the headquarters on Sycorville Road. They're still working on their on their application, getting some submitted items that I need so that may end up being December.
Emery had maybe a big O coming through with a special use permit, maybe?
Storage, special use.
And then we'll try to get you some of the code revisions. Can't promise all of them, but some more of the code revisions.
That'll be good.
Always fun.
Always fun. Sounds like a good, a good month to do that with not much else going on. So if that's it, that's it. This concludes. Thank you very much. Thanks to staff. Thanks to commissioners. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good night and we'll see you on the ninth.